Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to begin. This planning commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Moody, excused, Vice Chair Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Flengus, he's excused, and we have a vacancy for Commissioner Boner.
And just let it be noted that Commissioner Flengus will be meeting at around 7:00 o'clock tonight.
And we'll show him present when he arrives.
I'll call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process of appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, on the second page of the agenda contains our rules of the conduct. We appreciate you hearing to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Moving on to number four, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of any time any speaker is allowed, may be limited. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Please come forward. Moving on to item number five, for possible action to approve the final minutes for the planning commission meeting of March 10th, 2015. Commissioner Goins, may I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, please, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final minutes for the planning commission meeting of April 14th, 2015.
A motion is made. Please cast your vote. Please post. The motion is approved. Moving on to item six, housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioner, staff, applicants, or the member of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the June 9th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting. Item number seven, TMP 58507. Item number 24, SUP 57330. And the following item has been requested to be struck from the agenda. Item 25, SUP 57331. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items? Sir? Please state your name and address for the record.
About proposed things tonight? I went out to get an agenda, but they don't have any.
There's one right on the corner. And if it's on one of the items that we'll be hearing tonight, you can speak on it at that time.
It's item 58389.
Your name and address for the record.
Nick Brunns, 200 Hoover, which is the Newport Lofts.
Do you know which item this is? We aren't there yet. We'll be hearing this item later. If you'd like to take a seat, we'll call you back up whenever we hear that item. Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard on any of these items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to the next item, just so I can keep my sanity and a few of the people in the audience, I would just like to introduce my grandchildren, our granddaughters that are here tonight. The Wheezies, and one just headed to the exit. That's good.
Say hi, Papa. Say your name. Say, "Chad."
Gemma, who's three and a half, and the twins that are two.
Can you say hi?
Hi, Papa.
Hi.
Hey.
Can you say thank you?
Okay. So we'll let them go now, and we'll... But thank you.
All right. Commissioner Goins, can we get a motion on the housekeeping items?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the housekeeping items as read into the record by staff.
Motion's made. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes. Moving on to consent agenda, consent items are considered routine by the planning commission and may be acted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Is there any member of the public or planning commission that would like to hear one of these items? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the... One moment. I'm sorry.
I'd like to take number 11 off the consent agenda and put it...
That would be on the one motion, one vote. We're on the consent right now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the consent items. I believe item seven was requested to be held to the June 9th meeting. Therefore, it leaves item eight, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Moving on to the one motion, one vote items, the following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the planning commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number nine, ZON 58533, applicant Precedent Properties LLC, owner Mark Everett Thrower, for possible action on a request for rezoning from RE to R1 at the northwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Tom Boulevard, Ward 6 Ross. Item number 10, SUP 58548, applicant Premier Educational Facilities LLC, owner Southwest Carpenters Training, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a public school primary use at 4131 East Bonanza Road, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Item 11, SUP 58549, for possible action on requests for a special use permit for a public school secondary use, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Item number 12, SDR 58550, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a conversion of an existing 60,000 square foot office building for public primary and secondary school use, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Item 13, SUP 58222, applicant Buffet of Asia, owner WRI Charleston Commons LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 6,349 square foot beer wine cooler on sale establishment use within an existing restaurant at 151 North Nellis Boulevard, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Number 14, SUP 58332, applicant owner Great Wash Park LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,623 square foot restaurant with alcohol use with 2,771 square feet of outdoor seating area with a waiver to allow a 141-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is required at 440 South Rampart Boulevard, Suite 180, Ward 2 Beers. Staff recommends approval. Item 15, SUP 58389, applicant owner Harrison Properties LTD, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment use within a proposed 1,152 square foot restaurant use, Grand Levoit 725, 729, and 731 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Number 16, SUP 58467, applicant owner Fremont LV Boulevard LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 1,861 square foot tavern limited establishment at 509 Fremont, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Number 17, SUP 58487, applicant Omelet House Summerlin, owner Patton Rampart LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment use within an existing 2,000 square foot restaurant at 2227 North Rampart Boulevard, Ward 4 Anthony. Staff recommends approval. Item number 18, SUP 58513, applicant owner Fremont LV Boulevard LLC, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a special use permit, SUP 50433, for proposed 1,376 square foot expansion to an existing 1,400 square foot beer wine cooler on sale establishment use within an existing restaurant at 505 Fremont Street, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Number 19, SUP 58537, applicant owner Judy and Brian Alviser Living Trust 2005, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a gaming establishment, general business related within an existing 2,000 square foot general retail store other than listed at 1201 Stewart Avenue, Suite 3, Ward 5 Barlow. Staff recommends approval. Item 20, SUP 58547, applicant Harvest and Larder LLC, owner Pro View Series 21 LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed urban lounge use within a proposed 4,687 square foot restaurant with 654 square feet of outdoor seating area at 1130 South Casino Center Boulevard, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. And finally, 21, SUP 58568, applicant Cal Ranch Stores, owner D&amp;W Inc., for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed liquefied petroleum gas installation over 288 gallons used at 232 North Jones Boulevard, Ward 1 Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick point. Item number eight was final action unless appealed within seven days, as well as staff would like to hear removed from the one plus one motion agenda, related items 10, 11, and 12, as well as item 15.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, and that's on anyone other than 10, 11, 12, and 15.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Alfred Pozos. I live at 6865 Unicorn Street in Las Vegas, and I hope I'm on the right item. I got a little lost here. I think I would like to talk about item number nine. Is that within the time limit here, under one motion, one vote?
We could pull that one from one motion, one vote and have a public hearing on item number nine.
Okay.
And we'll call you back up in a minute. Thank you, sir. Anyone else, please come to the podium? Could you please come to the podium if you're going to speak?
No, I just wanted to get beyond 21.
All right. Seeing no one else, any members from the planning commission have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve items...
Before you make your motion, let me just say I'll be abstaining on item number 16 and 18, as I have ongoing business relationship with those applicants.
Okay. Then I will make a motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions, on items 13, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23... Or, I mean, 21, sorry. We'll stop at 21. Do we want to pull 21? Did you...
Number nine.
Number nine, well, I didn't put that on the list.
Motion has been made. And motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 13, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21 are final action unless appealed within 10 days to the city clerk for hearing at the June 17th, 2015 City Council.
Mr. Chairman, I have a correction. Item 13 is going to City Council. Yeah. Sorry about that.
On which day?
On June 17th.
So those items were approved, and you noted Chairman Schlotman's abstentions on item 16 and 17?
On items 16 and 18.
Oh, 16 and 18, I'm sorry. All right.
Moving on to number nine, ZON 58533, applicant Precedent Properties LLC, owner Mark Everett Thrower, for possible action on a request for rezoning from RE Residential Estates to R1 Single Family Residential at the northwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Tom Boulevard, Ward 6 Ross. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a rezoning application to change the zoning district from residence estates to single-family residential on 2.03 acres of land located on the northwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Tom Boulevard. Staff is recommending approval of the request as the density of the proposed is compatible with existing residential developments in the surrounding area, as well as compatible with the underlying general plan designation.
Is the applicant present? Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Levi Parker, Representative for Precedent Properties LLC, 3425 Cliff Shadows Parkway, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89129.
Would you like to explain your project?
The impression was basically exactly as Steph just read it. It's comparable to what has gone, been zoned in the area. The owner also owns other property in the area that's already zoned R1, multiple parcels, and so just applying for the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard in this item, please come forward, state your name and record, or name and address for the record.
My name is Dr. Alfred Pozos. I live at 6865 Unicorn Street in Las Vegas. Could we have this schematic projected on the larger screen so people in the audience can see it also?
I think they're seeing the same thing that you're seeing.
We are now.
You are now?
Right.
So what are you going to build on this property?
Actually, sir, if you could address me.
Could you have staff describe to me what is going to be built on this property?
At this point, I don't think anything is... We don't have a SDR in front of us. When we do have an SDR or the site development review and tentative map that will come back up, it'll be re-noticed. This is just a zone change. This isn't actually stating what is currently going to be built. Staff, would you agree?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. At this time, the applicant's just requesting to change the zoning designation of the subject site. It's not proposing any development at the current time.
So in the future, whenever this gets, when it comes before us, it'll get noticed, and we'll have time to comment on those things.
Right. Exactly. Well, so my question would be, if the zone change is approved by you as an entity, what does that allow to be built on the property?
We can... Steph can answer that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, the use is allowed on a single-family residential zoning district are described in Title 19.12 Promissible Use Chapter. Primarily, you're looking at uses that are residential, so single-family detached dwellings. In this particular case, density is allowed up to 5.49 dwelling units per acre, but the site itself limits that density based on constraints of right-of-way dedications, the interior roadways, and things of that nature, when it would be proposed development through a tentative map process. Thank you.
So if I understand this correctly, staff, it's approximately six individual residences? 5.49 residences? Single-family residents?
Mr. Chairman, the density would allow up to that, but the site characteristics would limit that to probably a lower number than 5.49. That is just the maximum density allowed by the general plan, as when you develop the actual site, the constraints of that site would probably limit it to less dense than that.
Okay.
Sir, if you can address your questions up here, and if you could give me all of your questions, and then whenever we get into a public or discussion amongst the planning commission, we'll try to address some of those questions.
Okay. So additional question to you then is, does this allow then for the construction of an apartment building?
We'll address that here in a minute.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes. Not questions, but a statement. I'd like to say on my behalf and on behalf of our neighbors being very close to this property, this is not consistent with the development on the two streets that are approximate to this particular piece of property. Myself and other neighbors bought in this neighborhood because it was restricted in terms of acreage to a particular resident size, and we are anxious to maintain that. I'd just ask for your consideration before you make your decision. Thank you.
If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Adams. Address is 6875 Unicorn Street. My question and statement, first off, is in agreement with Dr. Pozos that the reason why the vast majority of owners in this area purchased there is because of the size of the property, and that is something that we do not want compromised in that particular area. The streets over the size is different, but in our particular area, half acre is minimum. My statement beyond that has to do with notice. Supposedly, there were notices that went out, of which myself and the vast majority of our neighbors never received. If it was not for one of our very observant neighbors going around and literally knocking on doors last night, none of us would have known about this. This I have in my hand is a copy of a notice that his neighbor received. He actually never received it. I never received it, and the majority of people in my area never received it. So if it was not for him, we would not even know that we should be here at this meeting tonight. So my statement and my two primary complaints are, one, the rezoning for size for property, and, two, the complete lack of notice that this was even about to go through.
If I may ask just one question.
Yes, sir.
How far do you live from this particular subject property?
If you're counting houses, literally 10. Where the plot is, if I'm looking at the line where the blank area, where the blank area would be the property itself, Unicorn Street is the very next street up from Bradley, and where you see that you have the large green area, Unicorn, where it says Jarrett Avenue, my house is directly on the bottom of Jarrett Avenue. And if you notice, this particular area, this particular block, the size of the pieces of property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the planning commission. Actually, I'll, we'll allow the applicant to, for 30 seconds or a minute for rebuttal.
I just wanted to note two things. One, I know that the land use is actually higher. It was allotted for a higher zoning in this area, a medium density. And number two, just point out the fact that there's similar zoning all around this area. So as you can see on the map, the yellow is going to be a compromise of the zone that we're going for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn this over to the planning commission. Commissioner Quinn.
Good evening, sir, Mr. Levi. Did you offer to have a neighborhood meeting with these neighbors that have lived there for such a long time?
We were never told to have a neighborhood meeting.
Right. I don't think one is required, right, Doug?
That is correct. A neighborhood meeting isn't required for a rezoning.
So a neighborhood meeting would be just a good gesture of good faith at this point?
Correct.
Correct. Would you have a problem holding this project for 30 days and having a neighborhood meeting with these people so they can at least get to know you and kind of understand that they're going to be able to trust what you build, is what you say you're going to build?
Yeah, sure, if that's...
I mean, it's only a few days, really, because you're...
Absolutely, yeah. There's no problem with that.
Because these people have been here a long time, and these are old properties, and I just think it's a nice thing to do is kick it off by letting them know who you are.
Absolutely, yeah. We have no problem with that.
Okay. So if anybody else has anything to say, I'd like to hold...
I would just like to just address one of the citizens' questions, a question for staff. Would apartments be allowed on this site?
They would not.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale, Commissioner Goins, seeing that there's no other comments. Vicki?
Well, do the neighbors feel like, if you know there's not going to be apartments on this building, on this site, that it can't be, do you still feel like you need a neighborhood meeting? Because that's what I was, you do? Okay. So my motion is going to be to hold item numbers ZON 58533 for 30 days, which in fact will give you time to have a nice neighborhood meeting with the neighbors. You can exchange names now and then figure out a spot and come back, and everybody will be getting along.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Motion has been made, and that's holding it to... That's holding it to the June 6th, June 9th, 2015 Planning Commission hearing. Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Next item, relating items 10 and 11, SUP 58548, applicant Premier Educational Facilities LLC, owner Southwest Carpenter Training, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a public school primary use at 4131 East Bonanza Road, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. And item number 11, SUP 58549, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a public school secondary use, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. And item number 12, SDR 58550, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a conversion of an existing 60,000 square foot office building for public primary and secondary school use, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Staff, may we have your reports?
Mr. Chairman, before we go forward, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as my office represented the applicant in their land acquisition and so... Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request to convert an existing office and training building into a primary and secondary school. The conversion will entail the developing of the rear of the site into an extension of the existing parking lot, as well as the creation of a soccer field. Appropriate landscape buffers, widths, and plant materials are proposed as part of this project. Staff is in support of the proposed uses, as well as the submitted site development plan review, and therefore is recommending approval of all three applications. If to be approved, the Department of Public Works has a condition change to be made prior to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have your name and address for the record, please?
First of all, thank you all for being here and your service. My name is Josh Ford. My address is 7 Vintage Valley Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89141, and I am the managing partner of Premier Educational... partner of Premier Educational Facilities. And I would like to start by letting you know that Kipo Academy will be the new charter school that will be coming here, which is serving very needy and deserving students. And the need for this is that we need to open our doors by August 1st. As you can see, there are many students in the room and families that have worked hard to earn a five-star rating in the district. They have a need of a facility to operate as a charter school. And my team and I have reviewed the staff recommendations, though we're excited about the approval, we are in need of a condition that will give us time to create the second driveway as recommended in the traffic study performed by Ted Egerton, who's here to answer any questions. In the traffic study, the summary recommendations were that a second driveway aligned with Tris Court be added for the second year of operation in order to handle the increased flow of traffic as our student body increased, increased. Civil Square is currently preparing the appropriate drawings to be submitted in, in order to handle the driveway. On approval, the utility companies will be notified and will go through the standard due course of construction. This will require significant time, and we will not be able to handle that provision in order to open by August 1st, which is extremely necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Ted Egerton, 6345 South Jones Boulevard, Suite 100. What we'd like to do is have the condition read, that we'd have the driveway open and operational by November 1st, 2015. We believe we can get the plans approved through all the adjacent utility companies by August 1st, and that would give us a 90-day window for actual construction to accommodate any unforeseen circumstances.
Okay. Would you like to make any comments yourself?
No, I was just...
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard in this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Benjamin Salko, 649 Lucky Pine Street, Henderson, Nevada. Good evening, Vice Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I'm the program coordinator for the Scholars Working Overtime Program, which is becoming a Kipo Academy and looking to move into this space. We began as a college prep program for middle school students within the Clark County School District, and although our program has a long and powerful history, I think the most inspiring part is what you're seeing here in this room tonight, that it was created by students, by families, by teachers, and by partners right here in the East Las Vegas community. Working for the past five years on a shoestring budget and old portables and spare wings of CCSD facilities, this team has managed to quietly build and create the first five-star middle school in East Las Vegas. And in fact, we've done it so quietly that many people didn't even notice what we were doing. Yet, we've been able to post some of the highest growth scores in the city in reading, and the state's single highest growth scores in math. We have an amazing team, we have amazing families and some tremendous results, but we've never had a home to call our own. So for all their work, our families have never been able to stand outside a building and say that this is our school, this is the school that we built together. So last summer, we began the long process of applying for state charter to open our own school. Since our approval in January, we've worked tirelessly both to raise our startup funding, to recruit our founding students and teachers, and most importantly, of course, to secure a building. Our team's going to be forever indebted to Premier Educational Facilities and the families and partners who have helped make this building a reality, but we're so close now that we're incredibly hopeful the Planning Commission will give us the approval to actually move in on August 1st. Hundreds of committed families are waiting for a word that this building will open, and that brings us to our decision tonight. This building is uniquely important to our team, both because it's an ideal facility to convert into a school, it's already a training center, it's been operating that way for years, but also because for many of our families, this is their union training center. They were carpenters in the union, and they would like to see this building be something that continues to be special to their families and to our communities. So we understand the need for improvements. We're committed to stacking, to staggering arrival times, to carpooling, and all the things that we've always done in our CCSD spaces to make sure that our drives work in the beginning and that we're ready for that second drive to open in November. And we're looking forward to your approval. We imagine in, in your role as a city planners, you'd make decisions that touch all aspects of this valley, and we're excited for you tonight to make a decision that will expand educational opportunity in the East Las Vegas community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Denise Camacho, and I'm at 294 Claggett Lane, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89110. And I just want to say, I recently became a substitute teacher for the SWAT team, the Scholars Working Overtime, and the amount of growth that I've seen, I've also been with the program for five years, because my little brother was one of the fifth-grade students who started the program, and he's also here now in the back. I just want to say that the opportunity that you would give these students would tremendously help their growth as students and as leaders in our community, and that's what we need, especially in East Las Vegas. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, my name is Cindy Alarcon. I live in 4728 East Monroe Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89110, and I'm here to talk about SWAT. I have been in the program for two years, this being my second year, and I have increased in myself, and I've seen it in my peers. The reason I believe that the school should open August 2015 is because we should allow kids to have an opportunity to grow. Since I got offered the opportunity, I see how I am, like, I think about colleges, and I feel like I can go anywhere I can go. But when I had the opportunity to mix with classes I am now, since we are at a mixed school, and I've noticed that so many more kids, like, need the opportunity. I think to myself sometimes, oh, what would these kids do if they had the opportunity I have? Would they change, or would they be more involved in schools? Because sometimes, it's not only the teachers, but it's the kids who need a little push or motivation, and that's what I have, and that's why I've cared so much about my grades. And I believe that you guys should open the school in August 2015, because not only for myself, but for my community in East Las Vegas, like, even though we're a low-income community, why not give us the opportunity that other schools have? Like, we don't have many charter schools at that side, and the only schools that are magnet we have is East Tech and El Dorado that's going to be abandoned next year. But we want to open our doors to kids that are younger. We want to be middle schoolers who are thinking about college, who are, like, ready to succeed, families who are there to support us, because we're not a team. We're not a basic program. We're a family. We're here to stick to each other, and we'll do anything and everything to go through a college. And I believe that everybody should be offered the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Joelda Genal Segovia. I am current, I am currently in, oh my God, okay.
Could I get your address, please?
Um...
Name and address.
Um...
If you want to collect your thoughts and let her go first, that'd be fine.
Hi, my name is Claudia Montes. I'm at 1237 Claggett Lane.
Thank you.
I have been in SWAT since seventh grade. It was about three years ago when I first met the SWAT team. I remember the very first day that I met all the motivated, inspiring teachers. They were a bit intimidating, but I also remember meeting students who were so close, and they all motivated, because they all had one goal, and that was to get to and through the College of their Dreams. And the reason they were so close, because they helped each other. And what surprised me most about this team was that they took me in so quickly. They acted as if I had been with them since the program started, and I wasn't. And they have basically inspired me. They, they, they helped me better myself. And I have met them, like, I wouldn't trade them for anything in the world. They're, they're basically my family. We have all worked so hard to show people who have doubted us that we can't do it. We want to show them that we can, because students, just because students live in a low-income community, doesn't mean that they do not have potential. They have the same potential as students in other states, as students in Henderson, because we're all very smart, and we can do anything we set our minds to. A Kipo getting approved not only means a new school on the east side of town, it means we get to empower more students. We get more students to graduate. And most importantly, we get, we get students excited about learning. We need to change the education in East Las Vegas, and we can't put it off any longer. It must start today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, name and address for the record.
Okay.
One moment. Mr. Chairman, through you. The other ones that are standing, we have two microphones here, so you can actually come on down, come on down and fill those in. Make it a little quick. There you go.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joelda Genal Segovia. My address is 5946 Hendrick Field Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89110. And I am currently a freshman on the SWAT team. This is my third year in the program, and these, these three years, they've really changed my life, to be completely honest, because in, in, over the years, I've, I've really just been your typical, like, DC student, and to parents, that's kind of bad, but I remember hearing about this program in Keller Middle School when they showed up to our, showed up to the school. We were, all the sixth graders were, were in the little theater, and they told us that we, that they believed in every student in Las Vegas, that they can get to and to, to and through the College of their Dreams. And honestly, I wasn't even in the program, but I was, I already felt like what it, I already felt like what a teacher should be like, always supportive for their students and know that they're, know that they're the future. So I decided to sign up in the program, and I was pushed harder. I worked long hours at school, but it was worth it, because now I'm an ABA Honorable Student. I, I am current, I'm currently just in the Student Council. Pretty much everything I'm doing is going towards my future to go to college, which is Juilliard, and I'm trying my best every day to be a part of that, be a part of something in history for this school. And this really does mean a lot to me, because I never really had the feeling of teachers and students, or, or the meaning of family in school, because I always thought teachers were there to teach, and, and students were there to just try to get out of school, try to, like, finish school. But these teachers have really impacted my life, Mr. Salko, Ms. Campbell, everyone has really impacted my life, and they showed me that college is really important, and that we can be the future, and that what, and working hard is something that you shouldn't, you shouldn't give up on so easily, because education is that, should be valued, not taken for granted. And the school, and the school and this program has meant a lot to me, because, because of those reasons, and I'm just glad that I joined now, and I didn't join later on, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next?
My name is Said Maka Cortez. I live 5440 Cedar Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89110. First of all, I'd like to thank you, everyone, for being here. What I'd like to see and say is that today, I seen when SWAT started, my son is on SWAT team, and he's not just there because he has to be, he's there because he's like, like to be there. He's like to do what they're teaching them, what everything they've done for him, and I'd like to thank the teachers, everything the hard work they had to show. I mean, it's a big dream for the kids. If you guys can make it happen, the SWAT team, the Kipo Academy will have it on school, it's a, it'd be a huge for the state of Nevada and for a lot of kids, you know, especially for the kids starting to join, we've been there for, for so many years, just let the kids have, you know, the dream, and keep dreaming about it. Just like, thank everyone for that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Miriam Sotolo. I live at 3709 Haddock Avenue, North Las Vegas, Nevada, 89030. I am the parent of two students, as well as my niece attends the school, and the first time we heard of the school was through a friend of my niece's. Imagine my surprise when teachers actually come to your house in person and set up an appointment, and they want to give you a contract to say this is what is expected of parents and of students. Who does that anymore? Hardly anybody, to my knowledge. We came from Texas, we've been here in Texas three years. My daughters went to about two or three different schools until I finally found one that I saw a big change in my daughters. My daughters are straight A and B students. I have not seen that in quite a few years, to be honest. My daughters are excited for this, which I have not seen in many years since we left Texas, to be honest. We would love for this to go through, not just for my daughters, but for the many generations to come. The teachers are amazing, the dedication that they put on these children, and they make them responsible for their work. It's a big deal when you can teach a child education, but the responsibility that comes with it and what you can amount to in this world. And that is exactly what these teachers are doing. And to us as parents, that is a huge deal, and even it makes a difference in our home. There are things that maybe during my school years, and now my teachers are teaching me, that I never heard of, and they have a sense of unity and family that you don't see in a lot of schools. So this is a big, big impact on my daughters and for the positive. We really would appreciate it if this could go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Guadalupe Garcia. My address is 1450 Laboratory Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89142. I'm a parent on one of the students in SWAT, and I just want to say thank you to them, because they have given me something that no other school have ever given me. I taken my son out of the regular school, because I, I went to school, but I don't know too much, and the teachers would always tell me, well, look it up in YouTube so you could help your son. And I'd be like, oh, I have to go to work and I have to study this? So it was kind of hard for me. And so he was falling behind, although I tried to learn myself a lot of things. There was a lot of things I still didn't know. And just for me to get a hold of them, the teachers, I didn't know their numbers, and I would have to, it was, it was very hard. And so finally, I, one of the teachers of my son recommended me to this SWAT, and she told me, she said, I told her I don't know what to do anymore. Every school, I, I can't get help from my son. So she recommended me to Mr. Salko and the SWAT, I mean, their, their, the school, and they, they actually said, you know what? Just bring your son, bring him, and we'll tutor him. They would help him with his school, they would help him with everything. We would take work. He did improvement in that school because of them. And I said, you know what? I want my son to be in a place like this. I want my son, because I, I can't do it by myself. And if we want somebody to, kids to be successful, because they're going to be our generation. We're going to grow old and die, and they're the ones that are going to take over. So how we educate them now is going to impact on our future later. So I just let these people that love the kids, and they do it with their heart, do it. Don't, don't hold them back, because this is our future too. So I just want to thank them, and I just hope that you guys really, really consider what they're asking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carla Engelmeier, 3954 White Horse Street, 89115. I'm a grandmother. My grandson goes to this school, and when my daughter told me that he was being in a program called SWAT, I had no clue what that was. And then when they told me it was basically a college preparatory school, and he's only in sixth grade, I thought that was wonderful, to start at such a young age. I went to college, I had four kids, only one of which went to college, higher education, and that was because he was a wounded warrior and got the GI Bill. So I've always instilled the importance of higher education to my kids, and now I have eight grandkids and one on the way. I'd love to be able to see one of my grandkids go to college. And this program doesn't encourage college to just a few students, it encourages, encourages them to go to college, all of them. That's what the program is. It encourages them to go to college, and they make a pledge that they're going to go to college. That's important, especially with the knowledge that there's so many high school dropouts and so many students in regular school that aren't even considering college. So when I tell people that my son, my grandson goes to SWAT, and they ask where, and I have to say El Dorado High School, I'd love to be able to claim that he's one of those bright students that's 11 years old and going to ninth grade, but I have to explain that he's actually in the SWAT program, but they're using El Dorado High School. So it'd be wonderful for them to be able to have their own school, to call that facility their school, and I'm hoping that you approve this for August 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard in this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I, I'll give the applicant a minute for rebuttal, but there's nothing really to rebut after all that. So if y'all have no other comments, we'll turn it over to the planning commission for a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great comments on behalf of the students. I think the future looks bright, and if everybody would share with me, I'd like to give those students a round of applause. Very, very important, their goals. I, I work in the workforce every day, and so I recruit on behalf of companies, I recruit employees, I do assessments, I do a lot of requests on behalf of corporations, and I can tell you right now, in the state of Nevada, we're, we're suffering when it comes to our workforce. A number of companies actually have to, in the IT field especially, do 60% of the hires out and have come outside of Nevada for IT positions that we have right here in the state. So, and I'm also a namesake of a school, so you'll see my support. But I do want to... But I do want to get back to um, getting to work here to make sure we can get this school open for you in August because there are um, some items on there that, that need to be done, especially, a, a, and the reason I say that is I'm not a killjoy, I just want to make sure we have a safe, sound school uh, that we can open up with. So um, you'll see my support, but I wanted to ask about this driveway. What, what, what's the deal with that? Because you're gonna need that.
Correct. Uh, what we're, we don't disagree that we'll need it, especially when the complete enrollment is, is at full capacity. Uh, we're looking to have permits hopefully by August first and we're looking for a ninety day window for construction to take in any account, any utilities that we may encounter. Uh, so we're proposing to put that driveway in as soon as possible.
Just one other question, are, are, why are you starting so late on this?
Um, that's a good question. The, the state approval, so it was a, the process to get your own school in the state, you're not allowed to operate as a business until you get your state approval, which didn't come till late January. And as the school, we were attempting to build the school as the school itself, but ran into roadblock after roadblock attempting to find funding. So what we did, I was on the committee to form and a board member, I stepped off the board and, and with another friend, developed a holding company to purchase this from the carpenters union and then attempt to complete the project. So it was a logistic issue and, and in regards to the driveway, we, we had a traffic study completed and before we closed on the building, we wanted to make sure that traffic study was, to show that it was safe with our year one enrollment and then to also show that um, that all the conditions were accepted. And when we turned it in and we understood it was accepted, that's why we ended up closing on the building to move forward. And then now the idea of the second driveway, which is kind of a, a, a deal killer in getting us open on time, is why we're now backtracking to go. But the, the traffic study was performed that shows that the current stacking and the ability of the facility can handle our occupancy for year one. And again, the recommendation of the traffic study was that year two would be when that driveway would come into, to effect. We're, we're planning it, we're designing it currently and we're, we're happy with getting it done the second that it's logistically possible, but that's not going to be possible by August first.
Thank you. One last request, what, what does SWAT mean?
SWAT, it's uh, scholars working overtime.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, so I have a couple of questions myself. The location of the second driveway is lined up with Trist or something like that, whatever the name of that street is. And is there just underground utilities, like underground pipes or is it underground vault or above ground transformer or what, what's, what's going on?
In discussions with the civil engineer, there, there's uh, underwa, underground water lines that they're, that's close to the curb line that may have to be adjusted depending upon the depth. That's an unknown that we don't know until we actually go out there and start building the driveway. But also Nevada Power, uh, they need to go through Nevada Power and get their approval and that's the, that's the large unknown is Nevada Power right now, their approval process.
But let me ask you specifically, how do you know that there's NV Energy, uh, underground power there?
Uh, that's according to civil engineer. I, I have not reviewed it myself. That's what's just going on there.
Typically, this is thirty-six inches below grade anyways, so um, and when you're putting in driveway, that shouldn't affect you if you're only going down two feet.
The key word is typical. Uh, we, we've run, I wish I could say every project goes according to plan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, the ninety days that we're requesting gives us that window in case we do encounter something out of the ordinary out there. Uh, more times than not, what my experience in twenty-five years, is that unknown always comes back and bites us. Uh, so the November first, the civil engineer is comfortable with having the project completed, constructed by November first.
Okay. And so it's not necessarily anything above ground or vault that you're aware of, it's something that we're unaware of?
Correct. It's the unknown of underground. And of course, I'm afraid with the underground utilities, we don't, we, we kind of know by, before you dig, they actually mark out where the utilities are uh, with regards to a horizontal control, but the vertical, they're supposed to be thirty-six inches below ground. Uh, with this part of the neighborhood, it's an older neighborhood, it's, it's unknown.
A building downtown and I'm, but they don't even mark out half the stuff before we start digging, so I know what you mean. Lucian, uh, question for uh, staff, uh, Lucian. It was the original, um, it was original traffic study that was submitted that stated that they could, um, that they didn't need this until at the beginning, but through working with your department was whenever they decided, or when the city um, said, hey, no, we need this at the very beginning, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. When initially it was submitted as a traffic study, it was proposed to do the single driveway with phase one. The approval letter that was issued was that the existing driveway would act as a ingress and they would create a new driveway for the egress. And so it was not approved in the traffic, in the current approved traffic study to allow the single driveway for phase one, which is a little more than, you know, four hundred students and it's a twenty-four foot driveway currently, the existing driveway where we, the current standard is a thirty-two foot driveway. So it's a little narrower than the current standard and staff wasn't comfortable with just a single driveway for this operation. And so it was not approved to have a single driveway with phase one.
So I guess the question becomes, um, you know, I, I, I'd like to find a way to make this work, um, but what happens when we approve this and then, uh, in November it's not finished? Do you anticipate going past November?
Uh, no, we don't. Uh, we, we anticipate having this actually completed sometime in October. Uh, he, the civil engineer, I proposed October fifteenth, civil engineer just felt a little bit easier for November first date. Uh, what happens if it isn't uh, in compliance, November first code compliant is notified by Public Works and we get ticketed for it.
Okay, and, and your flashers will be up from day one, right?
Yes, sir. The flashers aren't a problem. The flashers are actually solar powered, so those are just foundations. Uh, we might have to get some easements to make sure we have the forty-two inch compliant for the ADA, but uh, from a standpoint from utilities, we shouldn't have a problem.
I'm just wondering if we should do an administrative review in November, that way we're not just relying on code, code enforcement to um, go, go out to the, to the site. Uh, do you think that that would be acceptable?
That would have been my suggestion, Commissioner.
You may want to do it before November, just to make sure that they're on track. Just a, just a thought.
Okay. But if we have a administrative review before November, if we do it on October and it's not on track, or if it's on track but not complete yet, do we extend it for another, I mean?
I, I guess I need to ask, what, what's the ramifications of not opening in November? What's going to be the, and I guess Lucian or planning can let us know that. Are, are they going to be able to open or will they, what's the?
Oh yeah, through, through, Mr. Chairman, right now, it's, you know, if we allow them to open, they'll be open August first or, or, you know, the end, the end of August. And so they will have already opened. Um, the, I don't think there's much that we can do once it's already opened to uh, maybe use code enforcement, but beyond that, there's not much we can do.
Excuse me through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's my opinion that um, them opening August first is uh, the right thing to do because first of all, it's not going to open at capacity. I don't think so. And then once the um, driveways put in on a six-month administrative review, being our five-month October first, and if in fact then, that's not finished, then we can, you know, fine them to get it done or whatever, but unfortunately, this school's not going to open at capacity. So therefore, I think that we'd be, um, it would be unfair to not have them open at all in August. So my motion, my idea would be to let them open, build the driveway, give them a six-month review to have the thing finished and then go from there.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, ju, just to give you, just to give you an advisement, if they fail to complete their conditions of their site plan review, the city could revoke their site plan review and their special use permit through a formal process for failure to comply with conditions. Uh, it would be extreme, but it is an option that the uh, city has, uh, as, as they fail to comply with their formal conditions. Of course, that would be meaning the school would close and the building would be empty. Uh, it hasn't been done for a site plan review in my knowledge, but it is an option within Title nineteen.
If there's no other comments, ready for a motion?
Yeah, should we, do we start with number ten, uh, number nine?
Number ten.
Number ten. And is that, is it number eleven that I put the driveway in, twelve? Okay, thanks. Um, I'm going to make the motion for approval, uh, following staff's recommendation of SUP five eight five four eight. Excuse me.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Um, the motion passes, noting the abstention of Rick Truesdale, or Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, SUP five eight five four nine, I would like to follow staff's recommendation for approval, um, and, oh yes.
Motion's been made for approval, please cast your vote.
And Mr. Chairman, before we go on to item number twelve, I'd like to make the condition changes so we can hear them before the, the vote.
Thank you, Lucian.
Please post.
The first one is a correction on.
Hold on, hold on a second.
Oh, sorry.
That motion passes, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, the first one is a correction on condition number eight of, of the SDR, item number twelve. I'd like to delete the last two sentences, um, so they don't have to modify the existing driveway. It would just read, in accordance with code requirements of Title thirteen point fifty-six, remove all substandard offset improvements if any, and replace with new improvements meeting current city standards concurrent with development of this site. All existing paving damage removed by this development shall be restored to its, at its original location and its original width concurrent with development of this site. And then the added condition would be, the existing driveway may be used for ingress and egress until November first, two thousand fifteen. After this date, the existing driveway shall be ingress only and a second driveway designated as egress only must be designed and constructed to the west, meeting the west of the existing driveway, meeting the approval of the city traffic engineer.
Thank you. And you agree with those conditions?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Motion, please.
That would be my motion. Um, following uh, staff's recommendation for approval, SDR five uh, eight five five zero, um, with the added condition that by November fifteenth, the new driveway would be egress only and there will be a administrative review on that.
The.
November first, twenty.
November first, twenty fifteen.
Fifteen. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion passes, note and abstention of Commissioner Truesdale.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, items ten, eleven and twelve are final action this evening unless appealed within ten days to the city clerk for hearing at the June seventeenth, twenty fifteen city, city council meeting.
All right, moving on to item number fifteen, SUP five eight three eight nine, applicant owner Harrison Properties LTD for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed beer wine cooler on sale establishment use within a proposed one thousand one hundred and fifty-two square foot restaurant use, ground level at seven two five, seven two nine, seven three one, South Las Vegas Boulevard, Ward Three Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, in October of two thousand fourteen, the subject site was originally approved for an eleven thousand seven hundred and eight square foot commercial building. In February of two thousand fifteen, the planning commission approved two special use permits for tavern limited establishments. First special use permit was for eleven hundred and fifty-two square foot tavern limited established on the ground level of the commercial building. The second use permit was for an eighty, eight hundred and sixty-four square foot tavern limited with two hundred and eighty square feet of outdoor seating area on the second level. The applicant is currently requesting to change the previously approved ground level tavern limited establishment to a beer wine cooler on sale use within the proposed eleven hundred and fifty-two square foot restaurant. Staff finds that the use can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the uses in the surrounding area and therefore is recommending approval of this application. If approved, staff would like to add the following condition, special use permit SUP five seven three two six is hereby expunged. Please note that additional letter of support has been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Good evening, Laura Dreya, five twenty, South Forest Street, here on behalf of Harrison Properties. As staff said that, um, this is downgrading to a less intensive use. Originally, the proposed barbecue restaurant wanted to be a tavern limited. Now they don't see the need to serve hard alcohol and they're happy with beer wine and coolers.
This is a public hearing and anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the, uh, public discussion, open it up to planning commissioners for, for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments, uh, I'd move for approval subject staff's conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, item fifteen is also final action this evening unless appealed within ten days to the city clerk for hearing at the, uh, June seventeenth, twenty fifteen city council meeting.
All right, moving on to the public hearing items, item number twenty-two, DIR five eight, five, five eight, five seven seven, uh, to receive a presentation on the status of the Charleston Corridor Plan.
Good evening, my name is Mike Howe, I'm a senior planner with the Las Vegas Planning Department. I'm going to give a brief update in the status of the West Charleston Corridor Plan. Uh, this draft plan has been developed in response to the activity occurring downtown and within the medical district. Basically, we're looking at the plant scope, the area that we're looking at, State Route one fifty-nine, commonly known as Charleston Boulevard. It's two point eight miles between Rainbow Boulevard and Valley View Boulevard. Uh, we have the medical district to the east and we have Summerlin and Red Rock on to the west. About a population of twelve thousand five hundred in that light shaded blue area. That area represents all properties within a five-minute walk of the center line of Charleston and that red outline area would be the effective properties of the plan itself. I want to go into a quick background on the, the reasoning that we started the plan with and it's just a, a look at the cumulative effect of reducing a posted forty-five mile per hour speed limit to thirty-five mile per hours. The risk of pedestrian death rate drops forty percent and severe injury drops to forty percent. You have lane width reductions become possible allowing wider sidewalks and possible bike lanes. You go from a thirteen foot wide street vehicle lane to a ten to eleven foot. Your urban forum emphasizes curb appeal. You have oversized freestanding signs, signs being replaced with smaller pedestrian oriented signs. Buildings meet up to the sidewalk, storefronts begin to appear outs, outside dining. Uh, your parking goes along the street or in the back of the properties. And when I bring up those points, one of the quick caveats I want to bring up is that Charleston is a Nevada Department of Transportation right away. So knowing that, the city doesn't have the ability to really affect any change on the vehicle right away at this moment. So our plan is basically to look at what can we do from the sidewalk, curb on. So we're looking at the actual land use in the areas to get ahead of the steps of when Charleston eventually does change. Uh, there's a long-term plan, but at this stage, we want a plan in place that takes care of what you see and how you use on Charleston prior to what affects the change with the vehicle lanes. So this transformation of land use. Land use and transportation are intertwined. The densest residential and commercial buildings should be placed closest to public transit routes and stops. This is important because that bus route two oh six carries approximately ten thousand riders a day and up to twenty-four, or, I'm sorry, twelve thousand riders over the weekend. Your best long-term results come from fine-grained incremental development, but also you have opportunities for coordinated redevelopment efforts that can assist multiple properties. And then you have the opportunity for missing middle housing. It's a term coined by a planner, Dan Paralek, that looks at, basically we have the pre-war duplex, garden apartments, um, different types of medium density, it still has the same density, but it has a little more design appeal. And then small tenant retail to accomplish that gap. And then small tenant retail to accomplish that gap. So, based on that premise, this is use follows context. This is a typical, common retail anchor that we see throughout the city. And this is the identical retail operator, same floor area, but you can see the difference. It's not changing the use, it's changing that urban character. Now, going to that moderating density with design, this is where we're talking about the missing middles. This is a very tractable, well-maintained apartment units on Alpine Place within the plan area. And then these are the same density, same use, same medium-density residential, but you can see that this provides the opportunity for a good buffer between those single-family mature neighborhoods that are in the back of Charleston Boulevard. So, looking at the existing conditions of Charleston, you have the current streetscape, where it's not fully functional for pedestrians, must be improved. Anyone familiar with taking a walk down Charleston knows that currently it's not probably the most pleasant walk. Things that we're looking at in particular, there's numerous driveways. We're looking at opportunities of possibly consolidating the driveways. If you look at the images on the top, so we'd have the discouraged on the left and the encouraged on the right. And then also, the image on the bottom is, if you can see, where it's making a continuous sidewalk. Again, we're not really changing much, other than the pedestrian right-of-way has priority. Just the perception that as a pedestrian, I have the continuous sidewalk versus having to cross through many street intersections. The good news is, we have an existing streetscape to model from. This is 725 East Charleston, and we're looking at taking some of the successes that this development had that falls within the current code. So, this is something that, we're not upending the code, we're finding ways to make the code work for a little more of an urban transformation on Charleston. Now, we've taken some typical lots, and we've kind of modeled out particularly the differences. What are we looking at? There's opportunities within the current Title 19 to provide landscaping that is more urban in nature like we had at the Legal Aid Center versus on the image showing on the left, your standard Title 19 15-foot buffer with the landscape planters. The image on the right provides a code-compliant landscaping that does now provide the opportunities for possible pedestrian activity, outdoor dining, again, all within code compliance. This is a quick scenario, just looking at some of the properties within the plan area. As you can see, this is at Arville and Charleston. And so, the image on the left, a quick catalog of what's there, we have six 100-foot deep C1 lots, 1,600 square feet of retail conversions, a total floor area of 9,600 square feet, 33 parking spaces were 54 required, and 11 driveways. Just doing a basic reworking of what we're looking for, again, within the code, we can get 100-foot deep C1 lot, an increase to 11,500 square feet of gross floor area, 63 parking spaces were 66 required, and two driveways. This would take a lot of coordination, there'd be a lot of things that iron out, but it does show that there's possibility within the plan area, using the current code, to do some redevelopment. Another one of the existing conditions that we have with Charleston is, we call corridor signage overload. Basically, the aesthetics of that classic urban, or we'd call rural highway. One of the things we're looking at, ways of addressing that, again, current examples on Charleston right now, you have your oversized freestanding drive-through sign, where the newer development has the same drive-through sign that's a little more scaled down, a little more contextually appropriate. Again, we're looking at things that are gradual changes that get us prepared for and probably a more grand plan down the road. Regarding the non-conforming signage, we'd like to have a plan in place that in the event when we do have those future streetscape or road widening improvements, we want to be ahead of the game where we can remove any of the abandoned signs or any non-conforming signs prior to having to, basically at the city's dollar, reinstall non-conforming signs. So, again, we're within the redevelopment area, so we're trying to use the incentive programs and the Quick Start and VIP programs to change, make that transformation from the pole signs, the non-conforming monument signs, and the roof signs that are actually area encroachments, in exchange for credit of the lost sign area, possibly applying dollars towards the removal of the sign, or using redevelopment funds for redesigning the sign to offset a sign that'll work for both the city and the property owner. So, the next steps, take this draft to the public, anticipating a public meeting sometime in early to mid-July to kind of go over pretty much the scope and the process of how this plan will work, and then to continue coordinating with the Medical District Plan and the Downtown Master Plan. At that point, if you have any quick questions, again, it's in the draft stage, it's just to show what we're working on. If you have any questions or input or comments, we'd be glad to take them.
One question that I didn't see in your plan, is there going to be, since this plan is pretty comprehensive in an area that's well-defined, there's a great opportunity to take all the studies that have happened over the last 20 years, talking about the city of Las Vegas and its solving its infill problem with aggressive solutions to get infill lots filled with good development. I think if a plan doesn't have that in it these days, and a real commitment to it, it's very difficult to talk about how you would get a whole area to change, because there's usually one or two infill parcels that can't fit the current code, can't fit the future code, and they'll just wait until somebody gets tired and change the code. So, the infill is a critical part of any of these plans, I think.
Just a quick question, I know, I don't know if it's in our pervy, but the bus stops along Charleston. My office is on Charleston, and I'm at Charleston and Torrey Pines, so heavily pedestrian traffic every day at about 1:30, when you have Bonanza High School let out, and you also have College of Southern Nevada, as kids are, they actually use Charleston and just jaywalk across. But the bus stops, anything in the plan to make sure that they are shored up? Or with all the recent happenings we have around bus stops and people getting killed, is there anything in the plan that addresses that, or is there to work with the RTC to make sure those are somewhat as safe as we can?
Absolutely. And that's one of the opportunities also of that, we call the modified landscape plan, is that that does give a potential buffer. So, Public Works does have an ongoing project of putting, installing bus turnouts where possible. Turnouts have the advantage of moving the bus stop even further, but where that's not possible, even just having a, basically a 10-foot wide sidewalk, if you can imagine, you'll have that space behind the bus stop that it gives even more space, that safety. But we are working closely with RTC, which has made that a priority to make safe bus stops.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is 23, DIR 58929, to receive a presentation on the status of the Las Vegas Medical District Facilities Master Plan.
Mr. Chairman, the Planning Department would like to introduce Shawnee Coleman from the Department of Economic and Urban Development.
Thank you. For the record, Shawnee Coleman, Economic and Urban Development. Thank you for having me here today to talk about this very exciting plan, the Las Vegas Medical District. So, what I'm gonna do is first give you kind of a background overview, tell you where we're at now, and tell you where we plan to go next. So, from a historical standpoint, about two years ago, the city embarked on some studies regarding where we could go economically, and one of the things that was targeted was the healthcare industry. And given that we have a robust healthcare industry in our downtown, the Las Vegas Medical District was identified as an opportunity for growth in economic development. So, in May of 2013, we began to act on those findings and looking at different ways that we can grow and expand and redevelop the existing district. In August, we established what we call the Medical District Advisory Council. And this is a council of existing entities in the district. They have two subcommittees. The purpose of the council is to promote collaboration and growth amongst existing communities and provide opportunities for new healthcare industries, and also increase the ability for medical education in the area as well. So, on September of 2013, there was a creation of the study area. So, the traditional Las Vegas Medical District is bounded by Rancho, Charleston, Alta, and MLK. It's about 214 acres, and what this study area did is it expanded the possibility of the Medical District to about 674 acres. So, you can see the potential for growth and development there. Around May 2014, considering the expanded Medical District, we decided that it was probably an opportune time to look and develop a master plan for the area. So, we initiated an RFP process and hired a master plan consultant. That master plan consultant is Smith Group, JJR. They also are working with the subconsultant local carpenter sellers, architects. And so, in December of 2014, we actually started this master plan process. And here is just a map, this kind of shows you, gives you an idea of the area. So, the historic, what we call the core district, is that kind of beige area, and then everything that you see in yellow is the expanded area. And so, as you can see, it takes into account some areas in Symphony Park, it takes into account some areas north of MLK, and also down Charleston. And part of the reason why we included some of these areas, because if you drive down Charleston now, there is an extensive amount of medical and healthcare services already provided in that area. So, the process that we used for the, to start the master plan was that we had interviews with a series of stakeholders. So, this is the UMCs, the Valley Hospitals, district institutions. We also included residents in that interview process, and then we also included public officials in that process as well. Since then, we've had a series of public meetings. We had one meeting that we actually had at UMC's cafeteria, which was a great opportunity because it allowed us to have conversations with employees. It allowed us to have conversations with people who actually use the district. It also allowed us to have conversations with students who actually are getting education in the district. That same evening, we had a public meeting specifically for the residents in the area. We held that at the Las Vegas Valley Water District, where we invited all the residents in the area, businesses and residents. We did a typical public notice mailer and invited everyone out to have a conversation with us about what we were planning and what we were thinking about, and listened to some of the suggestions that they had for the area. We had a professionals event. One of the things that we are looking at the Medical District as, it's not just something for the city of Las Vegas residents, but this is something for the valley. UMC is the only Level 1 trauma center in Southern Nevada, and so, a number of people who utilize the Medical District don't just live in the city of Las Vegas. We have people from Henderson, we have people from North Las Vegas. And so, what we wanted to do is, the doctors that serve there, the nurses that could possibly serve in this area, we had an event specifically for medical professionals here at City Hall, where we invited them to come and see some of the things that we were talking about and provide input into the plan that we're doing. Additionally, we've done some internet outreach, Facebook, Twitter. There's a particular software called MindMixer that allows us to actually ask questions of the public and get feedback from the public via the internet. So, some of the findings that came up, one of the very important things was the importance of the medical school. Right around the time that the city was talking about expanding and redeveloping the Medical District, UNLV also started talking and having a really big conversation about a public allopathic medical school. And one of the things that was noted that's very important to the growth and development of the Medical District is the location of the medical school, UNLV's medical school in the Medical District. So, this just kind of outlines some of the things that our master plan viewed as important, and some of the expectations that the medical school could bring. So, having an initial class starting in 2017 of 60 students, expanding that student base to about 120 and 180 students, and then about 250 faculty and staff members over a 10-year period. Some other findings that we, that came initially out of our research and work was an encouragement of urban mixes, an emphasis on health and education development, again, focusing on the medical school, and not just the medical school and allopathic medical school, but through conversations with UNLV, they have a desire to build out their health science program and nursing and physical therapy in the area as well. Ease of access, you heard Mike talk a little bit about transportation. Safe and welcoming, we want to make sure everybody feels comfortable in the area, walking, driving, and then making sure that it's pedestrian-friendly, just like we're looking at for our downtown. We want to make sure that this is an environment that's walkable. So, some of the preliminary organization surrounding some of those elements is that it actually creates four sub-districts out of the 674 acres. And so, the center, of course, is what we consider the core, that's where UMC Valley, that's where UNLV is. But then, some of the other ones like the Charleston Corridor take advantage of some of the retail and some of the opportunities that are already existing. The MLK Corridor, we see that as an opportunity, given some of the high density of uses that are already there, to increase that density of office use, possibly some residential use there. And then the Grand Central Corridor, that actually plays off Symphony Park. In Symphony Park, we already have some medical use there, we have the Cleveland Clinic LuRuo Brain Center for Health there. They also are in agreement with the city of Las Vegas to develop additional parcels there. So, the south side of Symphony Park, we see is a great opportunity for growth in healthcare. Some of the preliminary collaborative ideas that came out of the process were things like building a hotel, a medical library, food services, conference centers, fitness centers, housing for students, faculty, and medical professionals. If you look at the current district right now, and one of the things that's happening with Project Neon, a great deal of the multifamily on the east side of the district is actually going to be taken out. So, you're gonna be left with some single-family residential on the south side of Charleston, but a large portion of anything that could be considered maybe student housing or even professional housing is gonna be taken away by Project Neon. So, the capacity for growth, so our consultants helped us develop some ideas of what we think are growth areas, and those are identified by what we consider good potential, very good potential, moderate potential, and minor potential. Now, this is just kind of an overview, it's not set in stone, we're still gathering information, but you can see some of the areas that are identified, like around UMC campus, around Valley Hospital, kind of what we call that core area, identified as good potential for development. Some of the things also to consider is density. Right now, the Medical District has a density of below, a floor area ratio of below 0.5. And so, what we'd be looking to do is densify this area and increase the floor area ratio to somewhere average around 3.6. Right now, there's about 7 million square feet of space, usable space in the entire 674 acres. We would look to increase that density to about 35, increase that density up by 35 million. This kind of outlines what we consider a possible vision for the future, and it identifies some key areas. If you look at item number two, it identifies where the medical school could go. Currently, there is a memorandum of understanding between UNLV and Clark County to study the use of the Southern Nevada Health District site for the development of a medical school, along with some expansion for UMC. It also identifies areas where potential residential development could go, medical support services, and things like that. If we are able to get this development right, this is kind of the economic impact of what this development... this development could do over a 10-year period, 15-year period. So this actually looks at, it breaks, well, it totals, what you see in gray, it actually totals out the medical school and the district by itself, and then it gives you a total amount. So just the district on its own, if you look at an annual, an annual economic impact, we're looking at $121 million a year. We're looking at by 2030, adding 24,000 jobs. That would actually put the number of jobs in the medical district by 2030 up to about 40,000 people. So currently, what we're doing, we're looking at capacity studies. We're looking at things that relate to planning, such as development heights. We are looking at design and density studies. We're looking at our utilities. Can our utilities handle that many employees? If we need to add residents? We're looking at our streets. We're looking at traffic capacity. Do we have enough street capacity right now to handle ingress and egress of that many employees? We're working very closely with Public Works on their transportation project to figure out, okay, you know, if we want to get that many employees in there, what do we need to do with Charleston? Charleston has been identified as a major thoroughfare getting in and out. So we're working with Public Works, we're working with the RTC. Some of it may be not just looking at cars, it may be looking at alternative modes of transportation. The other thing to consider is residents in the area. If we build enough residential units in the area, then people don't actually have to drive to work. That will help reduce some of the traffic. So those are some of the things that we're looking at with the capacity study. Some of our next steps, one of the things that we are very cognitive of is the historical neighborhoods that are in the area. And so we are working on studies to help model out what development could look like for them. Sometimes it's very hard for neighbors to conceptualize, and we understand that they don't want 10- and 20-story buildings in their backyards. So we're looking at models that would help provide them with ideas of what new development would look like that would provide them some of the things that they want. One of the things that we heard from the residents is that they'd like to see some upgraded and increase of the type of retail that is available on Charleston. So we're working on models to help show them what that potential could be. We're going to continue to work with UNLV on the, the new School of Medicine. As many of you are probably aware, there's a lot of conversation at the legislative session about funding for the school. And we are working on, on the city side to try to figure out what we need to do to help support UNLV's medical school locating in the district. And then the goal is to finalize the plan. So we are looking to have final stakeholder information and interviews throughout the summer, and we hope to present a final document to the city council somewhere towards the end of the summer. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Excuse me, I just have one quick question to you, Chairman, and then I'll let you all go. With regards to the medical district, I'm talking about south of Charleston, north of Alta, sits the old health department. Is there anything planned for that building that's just sitting there?
The Southern Nevada Health District site? That's the site where UNLV and Clark County have entered into a memorandum of understanding so that UNLV can explore the development of the medical school on that site.
Because that's a great site.
Yeah, UNLV has been very, we've been engaged with them a lot. In fact, the consultant that we're using, Smith Group, JJR, is the same consultant that they're using, so we're able to tie our plans together.
It would be nice to see that place operating. Thanks for the hard work you put into this.
No problem.
It's my neighborhood, I appreciate it.
The plan is, is interesting, and it goes a long way. But I was curious why, this gets back to my comments on infill, is there's several random parcels on the south side of Charleston that are already intricately involved in that whole traffic core. They, they may be sensitive from somebody's perspective being adjacent to a single-family residence, but they front onto Charleston. And I see those areas, some of those carved out of the plan today, which, if you take a two-acre parcel and carve half, out half of it, you probably get no development on either piece, rather than saying, this is a viable development parcel that can provide any one of the type of uses that you want, and would give some economies of development scale. So those are the things that I would like to see the, the plan address more firmly. I mean, as of full disclosure, my real estate office is dead center in the middle of your plan. My house is on the edge of your plan. So I'm one of those people, but I've talked to all my neighbors, and they love living there. I love living there, and the reality is, they know some density's coming, it's just, if it, if it comes at an appropriate, you know, pace or, or scale, and not like death by a thousand cuts, then it's...
And that's what, that's one of the things that we're working on right now, is developing those models so that we can share that with the residents, so they can have an input and help provide us with what that appropriate scale is and how that actually happens. I think the border that you're seeing, it looks like it's kind of cut out. It is, and that just defines the actual district itself, but it doesn't prevent us from developing a plan that actually goes beyond that, that serves the entire community. So I think you're absolutely right.
But your, your, the plan provides for some development opportunities as well. And when you've got half the parcel, or half a parcel in the plan, half a parcel out of the plan, but both of them are in the redevelopment overlay, kind of, somebody coming in to develop a parcel like that suddenly has two levels of hurdles to get caught up on. And that's where, that's where we, our best intentions go the wrong way in, in slowing the kind of development, because quite honestly, there, there may well be people that go, hey, I, I can do something here that makes some sense, and create the right kind of product. But as soon as they look at, well, hold on, they're gonna, they're gonna focus on across the street, and I'm gonna be left in limbo. Not that the city of Las Vegas would ever do that, not that the county would ever do that, but it occasionally happens when, when we do plans that are very aggressive. So I'm usually not the one saying, make the plan bigger, because you make it bigger and then you get nothing done. But on the medical district, I think it's, it's good to put everything on the table, because just recently, you've got a large amount of medical space that Sierra Health has moved out of, that's created a, a little downturn in the economic model, because now there's all this vacancy there, and really, not a lot of vendors to fill it yet. But that also provides for great opportunities for looking at the future, to come up with the right projects. And, and I know, we've heard both plans tonight, and it is absolutely incredible that we're, we, we do want a walkable community, we do want a pleasant community. But if you think Brian Scott's gonna give up his car, you're wrong. No, I mean, this town has, you know, 2.5 cars per family or something like that. We're not gonna get out of our cars tomorrow. We can do a great job of educating residents that, you don't walk in the middle of the street, that's not healthy, and, and cars won't jump up on the curb and hit you. So there's, there's a, but I, I do believe we want a walkable community. This area is a mile and a half to the Outlet Mall and the new Cheesecake Factory that's opening. So there are things happening down here. And it's, it's, there's never been a greater time to say, the medical district has an opportunity. But we need to make it happen before our friends in the county lure some medical group out there, or someone lures somebody out there. If, if we want a medical district to really be vibrant, we have to make it easy for people to get to the finish line.
I agree with you, and valid comments, I will take them back to our advisory council for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 26, abance item, renotification, VAR 58121, applicant-owner, hand-property holding company, for possible action on a request for variance to allow 404 parking spaces where 473 spaces are required for a proposed 228-unit multifamily residential development at 501 North Lamb Boulevard, Ward 3, Coffin. Staff recommends denial. Item 27, abance, VAR 58122, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a seven-foot-tall front yard fence where five footons maximum allowed. Staff recommends denial. 28, abance, VAR 58123, for possible action on a request for variance to allow no wheel stops where required adjacent to sidewalk lessons, seven feet wide. Staff recommends denial. Item number 29, abance, SDR 58124, for possible action on a request for site development plan review for a proposed 228-unit multifamily residential development with a waiver to allow a five-foot-wide landscape buffer where six feet is required along the west, north, and south perimeters. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed multifamily use is appropriate for the, for the area. However, the proposed design of the subject site fails to comply with minimum development standards. This is exemplified by the applicant's request for variance from required wall height requirements, parking space requirements, and parking lot wheel stop requirements, as well as requested waivers of landscape buffer widths and requested exceptions from required perimeter trees and parking lot landscaping. As such, staff is recommending denial of all applications as proposed. Thank you.
Applicant?
Good evening. Bob Feibleman with Nevada Hand, 295 East Warm Springs Road, Las Vegas, Nevada. We're requesting reduction in the required parking from 473 spaces to approximately 380, or a ratio of 1.7 spaces per unit. We own and manage similar properties and feel that this amount will provide adequate parking. The proper balance of apartments and parking reduces asphalt and increases landscape area. We ask for your approval on this item, and if approved, that it be final action. Are we going through all of them in one shot?
Yes, we're hearing all of them, so please comment everything.
Regarding the fencing, we're requesting to increase the height of the fencing along Lamb from five feet to seven feet in the application, but after measuring the adjacent fence, which was six foot six, we would be fine with that. So we'd like to match the fencing that's immediately to our north at the Vera Johnson Manor B project, which is in this picture here. We'd like to, we've got a dog park out front that we're working on. We think that that, the higher fence might help that a little bit and provide a little additional security. The fence will be metal and see-through at the request of Metro. Again, we ask for your approval, and if approved, that this be final action. On our sidewalk issue, we're requesting a reduction in sidewalk with adjacent, that's adjacent to parking from seven feet to six feet. Cars typically don't overhang the sidewalk more than 18 inches, if at all, because of damage to cars. We believe that six feet will allow for the three-foot width minimum requirement for accessible route. In the extreme case, where a car or pickup truck backed in might extend upwards of three feet from overhang. So again, if, if approved, we would ask that this be final action. we've worked very hard to design this property to provide affordable housing in a way that's compatible with the guidelines of the Development Code and Master Plan. The requested variances, waivers, and exceptions speak to how detailed our plan is in addressing the specifics of the site with the goal of creating a good community that serves as many people as possible with high-quality, affordable housing. Careful attention has been given to the neighboring properties, as you can see in this aerial view, which best shows the building placements and their positioning to provide privacy and open views. We oriented buildings parallel to the channel on the south side to provide extended views. And on the north side, we located buildings on the inward side of the drive aisle, providing greater separation from the neighboring apartments, which we own now and manage. Also, we're planting additional trees on that property, which is called Vera Johnson Manor B, to provide additional buffering. The reason we're doing it on that side is there's a 10-foot landscape buffer on that side of the wall, whereas ours is five feet. And we think it's a more appropriate place for a healthy tree establishment. To the east, we only have building ends with few windows overlooking the wall. We've effectively maximized and aggregated usable out, open space for resident enjoyment. We feel that consolidating open space into larger usable areas for kids is best for this property. During the related zoning and GPA process, we held a neighborhood meeting and attended a neighboring property, the crossroads at 401 North Lamb's, their HOA meeting. In both cases, the project was favorably supported. To finance this affordable housing, the city has provided $15 million in bond cap along with $2 million in home funds. With your approval tonight, we'll be able to meet the city deadline of being permit-ready in September of this year. We ask for your approval, and if approved, that this be final action. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing. Any applicants that would like to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain on this item, as Nevada Hand is a client of the One-Stop Career Center, so I'd like to caution, I'll be abstaining.
Thank you. Seeing no one, public, this public hearing is closed, and I'll turn it over to the Plenary Commission for comment.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, I know when Nevada Hand comes in here, everybody goes, they're always looking for waivers or variances, and I know staff does their job very well, but you're building projects that provide a housing stock that we don't have for, for a, a major segment of the community, and it would, it just makes sense that we work through our codes and work through the process and provide ways to get you to the finish line, so we, so these projects can happen, because I think the need is there, and, and they, they've done very well in being appropriate in where you, what you've been building. So if there are no objections, I'd, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments first, and I, I met with applicant and spoke about this project, and a couple of the things was, you know, maybe we don't have the right trees in the right location, and, but altogether, we have like 153 trees or something like that across the site. I might be getting my numbers mixed up a bit, but, and not having the parking lot trees, I mean, there's shade structures over, you know, most of the parking stalls on the site. You know, and when I looked at the site, I mean, there is other trees on one side of you, you got the channel on the other side requesting a waiver for a landscape buffer between you and a drainage channel. I don't see that as being that big of an issue either, so those are my comments. I wasn't really keen on the six-foot-six fence, so not sure if you'll see my support on that one, but other than that, you'll see my support on the project.
Anyone else? Okay, ready for a motion?
With regards to abeyance renotification, item 26, move for approval, subject all staffs as of approved conditions.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Please post. That motion passes, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goyens.
With regards to item 27, VAR 58122, with regards to a seven-foot wall, the wall you said is 6'6", is that the metal that was facing outward?
Metal fencing, yeah, it won't be block, it'll be six foot to match the existing that's adjacent.
I just, I just think the six-foot wall's more appropriate, so I...
As far as a block wall? Or you mean six-foot height for the...
Six-foot height for the exterior. Six-foot height for the exterior wall. I know your concerns, I just, I think we tend to fence ourselves in too much, and on this one-
I'm okay with that.
So I'd move for approval, subject to the height of six-foot height.
The motion's been made. Please cast your vote.
Is that with an amended condition?
With amended condition?
Yes.
Yes. That motion passes, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines.
And with regards to item twenty-eight, abeyance VAR five-eight-one-two-three, move for approval, subject to all staffs as if approved conditions.
Motion's made. Please cast your vote. Please post. That motion passes, noting the abstention of Commissioner Goines.
And with regard to item twenty-nine, abeyance SDR five-eight-one-two-four, move for approval, subject to all staffs as if approved conditions.
Motion's made. Please cast your vote. Please post. That motion passes, noting abstention of Commissioner Goines.
Mr. Chairman, items twenty-six through twenty-nine are final action unless appealed within ten days to the city clerk for hearing at the city council meeting of June seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen.
All right, moving on to item number eighteen, I'll be abstaining on this matter, seeing as how I have an ongoing business relationship with the, oh, I went backwards. Okay, for item number thirty, abeyance item VAR five-eight-one-five-seven, applicant owner, Levi Wolf Family Trust, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a forty-two front yard setback where fifty feet is required for a proposed addition to a residence at two-zero-four-five South Tenaya Way, Ward One. Staff recommends denial.
Mr. Chairman, the property has an existing variance to allow a four-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required. Staff finds this new request to be a self-imposed hardship and is recommending denial.
Applicants?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is David Mills at five-eight-four-zero West Craig Road. I'm here in behalf of my client, Ingeborg Levy, asking for a variance on adding in addition to the front of her house, which is actually adding square footage to existing bedrooms.
Would you like to add anything else, or would you like to add, put your name on the record?
Hi, my name is Ingeborg Levy, and my husband and I am the owner of the house, the old house.
And your address?
Twenty-fourty-five South Tenaya Way, eight-nine-one-one-seven.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public discussion, turn this over to the Plenary Commission. Commissioner Erquen?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mills. I was the one that held it last time, because I wanted to drive by to ensure that the house is going to be of continuity with the rest of the neighborhood, which it is, and on top of that, I do see that it might not be a personal hardship for someone that's just looking at the paperwork, but looking at the way you're living. It is, it is a hardship, and you do need this entrance to come into your home and to live much more comfortably. So with that, I'd like to make the motion, if no one has anything else to say, for approval of item number thirty, variance five-eight-one-five-seven.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, item number thirty is final action this evening unless appealed within ten days to the city clerk for hearing at the June seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen city council meeting.
Item thirty-one, abeyance item SUP five-eight-one-six-one, applicant Mark and Smokes, owner Patricia Wong, for possible action on a request for special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off sale used within a proposed five-thousand-three-hundred square foot general retail store at five-nine-zero-zero West Cheyenne Avenue, Ward Five Barlow. Staff recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, I'm going to abstain on this item as much as I have a financial interest in the adjacent shopping center.
Thank you. Staff?
Mr. Vice Chairman, the proposed general retail store is five-thousand-three-hundred square feet in size. They're proposing to have two-hundred-and-fifty-seven square feet of space used for the display of alcoholic beverages. The retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off sale will be ancillary to the proposed general retail store, as this request meets all the minimum special use requirements. The use can be conducted in a combative and harmonious manner, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, twenty-five-hundred West Sahara, representing the applicant, which is Mr. Sam Kaju, who's with me, and also with me is Ms. Anna Viverka, who did our public outreach, she'll talk in a minute. And as staff did indicate, this is a request for a convenience store, and this would be the third one for Mr. Kaju. He has two other ones, one at Torrey Pines in Charleston, and the other one on East Sahara, and they're both similarly situated, backing right up immediately to neighborhoods. This location in a shopping center is where Vons used to be, and Vons has moved out of the center, and pretty much the center's pretty vacant, including this building. I think prior to this was a church, but the church moved out a while ago. Prior to making our application to the, to the city, at Councilman Barlow's request, we had a neighborhood meeting. It's not required, but we went ahead and had a neighborhood meeting. We had about fifteen people, which included us, some of the neighbors from the county across the street, and like the property manager and the leasing agent, so, and there were some just questions that just arose, but I think for the most part, we all walked away thinking it was a pretty good meeting, and in talking to staff the next day, they felt that it was a pretty good meeting. So we walked away with that. The one thing I do want to say about Sam is that he runs a very safe operation. He believes like that his employees are basically part of his family, and so as a means to protect them, he has like the cash register in that area. It's behind bulletproof glass. It's not required, but he just thinks that adds an element of safety, and it's also like a deterrent to anybody coming in and seeing that it is behind bulletproof glass. He also puts cameras around the entire facility, and he, and inside the facility. So one of the things that he has a policy for his business is that if he sees, like, you know how sometimes teenagers kind of ask adults to go in and purchase alcohol for them, he trains his staff that if he sees somebody doing that and they come in and buy alcohol, then that person basically is forbidden to ever come in again. They're banned for life, because he just doesn't tolerate selling to minors, even to a third party. So he does run a very safe operation. On his property on East Sahara, there was a real graffiti problem, and even though he's, it was an inline space, what he took it upon himself to have a bucket of paint, and every morning, as the morning shift comes on, they come in and if the property's been tagged anywhere in the center, they just, they paint over it. And after a while, the graffiti stopped kind of coming. He's committed to doing the same thing here, because I think because there are so many vacant spaces in the center, that, you know, there are some problems with tagging and graffiti. So he, you know, he'll clean up the space, he'll put lights in, he'll put cameras in. One of the things that he will do, because it does back up to two houses immediately to the east, is work with those neighbors to make sure that the light isn't reflecting into their, I mean, we know there's no overspill, but we don't want it to be so bright that it, you know, keeps them awake, but we also want it to be safe for them. And I think one of the neighbors asked that we clean up the brush and make it so people can't hide in there, which I think with the lighting, the cleaning up the brush, and the cameras, I think will make it a much safer situation for them. I guess the other thing is that we did go out into the neighborhood, and Anna's going to talk about that in a minute. I think one of the issues that the neighbors brought up at our meeting was that they felt that there was plenty of places that you could buy alcohol at that intersection, and there is a Dollar General, and there's a Walgreens on the south side of Cheyenne, but there's really not a place that the neighbors to the north and to the east of this site that can just walk to without having to cross a six-lane divided road or go over to the intersection. And if you look further to the west, like at Rainbow and Cheyenne, there's at least three places that sell alcohol. And if you go even further west to Tenaya, there's the two gas stations or convenience stores at the corner that sell beer and wine, and then Target actually just added a full grocery store inside its store and adding beer and wine. So I don't know that that's having an abundance or a convenient place to walk to to get beer and wine is, I think, really an issue. I think it actually provides a service to the community. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Anna, and she can talk about her going out into the community. Oh, and I also would like to turn in this petition with signatures from the residences to the east.
Hi, Anna Viverka, fourteen-forty-two White Drive. I was the one who went to the addresses that were right to the east, there's thirteen addresses there, and spoke to the neighbors. By and large, most of them were excited at the idea of having somewhere that they can just walk across and go get some milk. After the Vons closed, a lot of them missed having that convenience. And there were one question, one gentleman that they had issues, that there were something that he is willing to work with and has agreed to. Oh, and there was some confusion. There was some people who had the misunderstanding that there was going to be a bar that was going in, but when they realized that it was a convenience store, they were, had switched their opinions on it.
So I guess with that, we're happy to answer any questions, or wait and see if there's any neighbors there?
This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Stephen Iger, three-three-three-two Cotswold Street. I'm the leasing agent for the whole shopping center, not just that parcel for this pad here, but also the entire shopping center with the Vons. I've been, I've been that for several years. Vons did move out years ago. They're still a tenant, they still pay rent, it's above-market rent. Replacing them is not even, I mean, you can't, they're paying rent and they won't leave. That killed the rest of the center. This pad building here, fifty-nine-hundred West Cheyenne, that Sam's working on getting into, has been a constant issue of vagrancy, vandalism, graffiti, gang, et cetera. And the owner, frankly, you know, he can't, can't do it much more. There's no sprinklers in the building. The only calls I ever get on this thing are a church or a convenience store. I can't do anything else. I don't have sprinklers to do the church anymore, so the church that left, the city won't let me do that anymore. The only option is to do this, and if anybody's qualified to do it, it would be Sam. The, I don't know, if he doesn't get approved, I don't know what's going to happen, because the guy that owns this building, or, excuse me, Patricia Wong, you know, she's poured money into this year after year, replacing windows, covering graffiti, trying to clean up all the trash, and, you know, people being on the roof and living inside, things like that, and I don't know what'll happen, you know, if she's just going to give up, because there's nothing I can do for her, because what are we going to do, throw a hundred thousand dollars into a sprinkler system for a building that I probably am not going to be able to recover the cost on, because there's no anchor in the shopping center? So anyway, I just wanted to put my two cents in there, and hopefully it all goes well. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public discussion, turn it over to Plenary Commission. Commissioner Goines?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate all the hard work you guys did on this item. This item hadn't been contentious, it's contentious, it's just been one that's been pretty unique, the fact that you have a whole shopping center here that's kind of, kind of shut down, but does that really justify the fact that you got a fifty-three-hundred square foot building, that it needs to be a convenience store when you've got a big box sitting behind it? And I appreciate the leasing's agents' comments, but I'm kind of looking at the future down the road. A store is going to come back there, it's going to be a grocery store. But one thing I heard Ms. Stewart say when she, she kept resounding that, you know, you can, people can walk there to get their beer, people can walk there to get their wine, people can walk there to get their alcohol. And then the canvasser comes up and says, I talked to a lady, says they can go there and get their milk. And so today, what I did, because you have one of your stores right next door to my office, so I just took a walk over to the one at Charleston and Torrey Pines, which is a converted seven-eleven, and why it may have a feel of what you described as being safe, when I walked in, I thought it was like, my God, the whole thing's fortress-in, all of the help is behind a plexiglass. I didn't see much grocery in there. I did see a lot of liquor. I did ask a couple of the tenants outside, because this particular store does not abut a single-family home subdivision, it abuts apartments, and it is on a street where there's a Jack-in-the-Box on the corner. Your store is one that was a seven-eleven that's converted. Next door to that's a tavern, next door to that is your apartments. And so what I decided to do was ask a few of the residents that were, I'll use the term lightly, loitering in front of the store, do you use this store? Do you live in this area? Do you shop? Do you get groceries here? What I heard is, nope, we get cheap cigarettes and cheap beer. So I asked again, do you shop here? Do you get eggs? Do you get milk? Do you get cucumber? Do you get bread? Where do you go in to get this area? Well, we go down to the Walmart, but this is a quick place from the apartments where we can come over and get beer and cigarettes. And so now you want to come over to Jones and Cheyenne and write a but, I mean, not even six feet from a house, you want to put another store. And I know I walked that neighborhood, and I know what I heard from the neighbors, and I know what I explained to them. I didn't tell them it was a tavern coming. I didn't tell them, I explained to them it was going to be exactly the way the item read. And from what I understood, from the neighbors I spoke with, the six or seven that were opposed to it, even when it was a blockbuster video, they got tired of the store being robbed, and then they jump over their fence. Or they're out in their, in their backyard trying to have a nice sundae or something, and somebody throws something over the fence, or somebody comes over the fence. So at this point, when I look at this on its merits right now, I can't support it. I think, I think it's going to hurt the neighborhood more than it's going to help the neighborhood. You've got a Fresh &amp; Easy there, you've got a CVS there, less than half a mile, there's a Smith's. Ms. Stewart even said there's plenty in the area right now to go get something. And I typically don't see families walking down the street when they go to, old country word I use, to make groceries. Usually when you make groceries, you're taking the car to the store and the wagon. I don't, I don't see too much of that. So I don't think this is a grocery store, as it's trying to be depicted as. I think it's a convenience store, and, and the major product there is the beer and the wine. And I won't be able to support that at this time at, at that area. Those are my comments. If not, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion. On item, pardon me?
Go ahead.
On item thirty-one, abeyance SUP five-eight-one-six-one, my move is for, or my recommendation is for denial.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote, noting that a yes, a yes vote is for denial. That motion to deny passes, noting the abstention of Commissioner Truuston.
Item number thirty-one is final action unless appealed within ten days to the city clerk for a hearing at the June seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen city council meeting.
Item number, item number thirty-two, abeyance VAC five-eight-one-six-three, applicant owner Diamond Zing LLC, for possible action on a request for a petition to vacate the public right-of-way, commonly known as Lewis Avenue on the south side of the property, located on the northeast corner of Lewis Avenue and Tenth Street, Ward Three Coffin. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject vacation request is to reduce the north half of Lewis Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, the subject vacation request is to reduce the north half of Lewis Avenue adjacent to 1001 Lewis Avenue from 40 feet to 30 feet. Currently, the city is working to implement complete streets and widened sidewalks in the downtown area. If approved, this request will limit the city's ability to provide extra wide sidewalks adjacent to the site in the future. Therefore, we recommend denial of this application.
Thank you. Applicant, please.
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, 8345 West Sunset Road, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. If you could have the overhead, thank you, zoom in a little bit on this aerial. This might be a little difficult to read, but, thank you. What this shows is Lewis Avenue right here. And if you were to put this exhibit and this exhibit strung together, you would have Lewis Avenue from 9th Street all the way until 15th Street. The reason why we wanted to go with that area is to show you that Lewis Avenue terminates at 9th Street and then terminates at 15th Street. So it's roughly a six-block-long street. Within that block, prior to we get, prior to I get to why we're asking for our application tonight, we wanted to show you that the areas that are in yellow, which would be just on the other side of 11th Street, there are two areas in yellow, and then closer to Maryland Parkway and 13th Street, those are all existing vacation applications that have been approved by the City of Las Vegas that effectively, although differing requests, reduce the width of Lewis Avenue from 15th Street to 9th Street. The reason for our request tonight is, this gives you an idea of what the building looks like today. It is about an eight-unit apartment project that our client would like to redevelop. From an aerial photo standpoint, as you can see down below, this gives you an idea of what Lewis Avenue looks like today. There's a sidewalk, and then here's a fence, and then behind that is some dirt area, and then the building. This aerial right here would show you approximately where the property line sits today. It's this faded line right here. We're asking to vacate 10 feet of that property so that we could redevelop what that building looks like into a project that looks like this. As you can see, we would still maintain the sidewalk, and then we would do landscaping behind that. And then behind the landscaping, where we would, if this application were approved, we would recapture some of that property and create private courtyard areas with some type of fenced-in look. Doesn't necessarily need to be a block wall, but some type of overall fenced-in look. We think that this application is appropriate, given the precedent that has already been set along Lewis Avenue with the other vacations. And then just to give you an idea, the developer, or the proposed developer of the project that I just showed you, he has developed other projects in the downtown area. This is over on 7th Street, I believe, within the law office legal area where they've got a lot of houses that have been converted over to professional offices. He did both of those. So he does believe in being in the downtown area. He does build a nice project. Certainly, I think that the project he'd like to build is an improvement, and we would ask for your approval of this vacation request.
This is a public hearing, and anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll turn this over to the planning commission for your comment. Okay, I will go ahead and start. Okay. My only issue with this is going all the way down the street on that whatever, north, we have a similar right-of-way. And if we take this way, this one piece away, then it kinda makes that block choppy. And with complete streets and with, you know, hearing about the planning department possibly a couple of years ago was talking about incorporating this into the Centennial Plan, we know it's gonna go into the new downtown master plan. And if we come in and we have water, pedestrian pathways and sidewalks, or something along those lines, we'll never get this land back. So a question for Lucian is, is there a way that they could do what they want with an encroachment permit? Because they're not building anything on it permanently. And then if we ever need that property to put in a wider sidewalk or whatever, we can have those improvements taken out?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just like you said, that if there are improvements that we can take out in the future, then the encroachment would be an option. But I don't think that's what the applicant's requesting. They're looking for more permanent structure in the right-of-way. And we usually do not remove the permanent structures once they're in there.
So even if it was a wooden fence, you would classify that as a permanent structure? Not a block wall, just a wooden fence?
I think a wooden fence, we can easily take out. But I believe the applicant is requesting more permanent structures within the approximately, I think, 15 feet that we have outside the existing sidewalk.
Okay. I think it's a beautiful-looking project. I think that there's a better way to go about doing this because the second we give this up, there's no way to get it back. So those are my comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Currently, the street is built out at what, a 50-foot right-of-way, curb-to-curb?
Yeah, let me just measure that. Here's, curb-to-curb, we're approximately...
Or is it 40 feet?
Try this again. About 35 feet approximately, just going off of an aerial.
And so the right-of-way at 40 feet to center line would be 80 feet. So if we, if they vacated the 10 feet, you'd still have 30, you still have a 60-foot right-of-way, which is our typical for our secondary arterials, right, or secondary streets?
Yes, it's typical for our minor collectors as a 60-foot.
Minor collector, which this is a minor collector, right?
Currently, I don't believe it is classified in...
Is it even below that?
Yeah, it's not classified as a street, so...
And I understand Commissioner Schlotman's comments are about going in the future. But Lewis is one of those streets that is as narrow, and we've vacated, you know, sections along here before. And I know we have another item before tonight that's talking about regional street questions on other streets in the downtown, but this street was not part of that list. So at least in today's thinking, it's not high on the priorities of regional streets. So I understand the desires to have flexibility and wider, but in some regards, this is like that infill. How can we get good development happening? Or we can say we're waiting for the golden ring. I mean, we can wait for the perfect solution here, which may never come, and be another 30 years, and this apartments could look a lot worse. Or we can say, with reasonable assertions, this is not a street that's gonna be high on anybody's list to widen. We vacated a section of the street for the Sunset School or whatever that's called, the night school that's right adjacent to it. So I'm willing to support the application. I think there's still a significant amount of right-of-way there that if there's a widening of streets or widening of sidewalk, it would still be an attractive project that fits within the character of the neighborhood. So my motion would be to follow staff's as-if-approved conditions.
I'll just echo Commissioner Trusdale's comments on this. I don't see this as a priority to ever widen in the near future or even in the far future. And on the second thing is, is that again, as Commissioner Trusdale pointed out, we've already vacated other stretches along this, and we really need to be consistent in what we do as a board. So you'll see my support on this.
Sure. And just one last comment. I just wanna echo, I know that we have vacated stuff up and down the street, but we hadn't vacated anything along that side of the street. And therefore, we're giving up any potential opportunities for sidewalks or whatever going down Lewis Avenue, which could be one of our major trails. I mean, we've been talking about putting in public parks. We've been talking about putting in public parkways, taking up one or two lanes, taking up part of that right-of-way. And there's plans already in the works all over downtown. This could have been a perfect opportunity for one of those trails. But, you know, that's my opinion. So we'll let Rick go ahead and make a motion.
I think I made the motion, and I do understand the trails, but they're still significant enough right-of-way to accomplish those goals. So my motion is, again, to follow staff's as-if-approved conditions for approval.
Motion has been made. Please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, that, this item, item 32, will be heard at the June 17 city council meeting. I also have a correction on item 31. Item 31, SUP 58161, will also be heard at the June 17, 2015 city council meeting. We'll make sure the applicant is informed of that. And I believe we need to take a break for our clerk staff.
All right. Sounds good.
Sounds good.
item number thirty-three, GPA five-eight-three-one-nine, applicant owner, city of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment to amend the master plan of streets and highways to add Sixth Street, Seventh Street, Eighth Street, Ninth Street, Tenth Street, Eleventh Street, Carson Avenue, Bridger Avenue West, Clark Avenue West, Promenade Place, City Parkway South, and Symphony Park East and West as collector streets. Ward three coffin, staff recommends approval. Staff, please, report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this request to amend the master plan of streets and highways to plan for increased mobility and connectivity in the downtown area. Additionally, by placing these streets on the city's master plan, they'll be eligible for funding by the Regional Transportation Committee. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this application. I'm here to answer any questions on the item.
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody. Some person who's fair. Don't get any of that prey. Very useful, right?
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing. This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't. But just to make sure we have that plan.
What's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody. Some person who's fair. Don't get any of that prey.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
No, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff.
Yeah, unfortunately, I haven't been involved with that.
I haven't either.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know.
Unfortunately, I haven't been involved with that.
I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
Now, what's your friend in the room?
It was interesting to see some of the things that you were talking about, um, representation in the education department. So, um, and then Tom was saying once and for saying, are you there also? And then Ryan was saying, Tom, so that's what we're seeing. They were kind of all this whole stuff. But, um, I don't know. I haven't either. I don't know who it is.
It's all new. You need to find somebody.
Yeah, I know, just trying to take, I know, just that the things I'm doing and bringing the mouse, everybody's playing.
Oh, that's the most I've heard about.
This is the most, this is going on, this is the deadline, we done our thing. So we keep on up, but we haven't.
Well, I don't know if we ever.
But just to make sure we have that plan.
I would make a motion to follow staff's as-if-approved conditions for approval on item thirty-four.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
And with regard, with regards to item thirty-five V A R five-eight-five-one-nine move for approval subject to all staff's as-if-approved conditions.
Motion's been made, please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
And with regard to item thirty-six move for approval subject to all staff's as-if-approved conditions.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if we could amend condition number six on that, to read the southern perimeter wall, the chain link fence shall be in good condition, a minimum of six feet tall incorporated materials such as slats, slats mesh or vegetation and otherwise conform to Title nineteen wall standards.
And you're in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay, then that would be the amended condition and move for approval.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, items thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six will be heard at the city council meeting on June seventeenth twenty fifteen.
All right, moving on to item thirty-seven, thirty-seven through thirty-nine V A R five-eight-four-one-zero applicant Payless Tire Shop owner five-thirty Holden's LLC for possible action on a request for variance to allow non-parking spaces where eleven spaces are required for an existing auto repair garage minor use at five-thirty North Las Vegas Boulevard Ward five Barlow staff recommends denial item number thirty-eight V A R five-eight-four-one-one for possible action on a request for variance to allow a zero-foot rear yard setback where twenty feet is required, a zero-foot side yard setback where ten feet is required and allow a five-foot tall screen, screen wall where eight feet is the minimum height required for an existing outdoor storage use staff recommends denial and item thirty-nine S D R five-eight-four-one-two for possible action on a request for a site development plan review to change a parking lot circulation, other onsite improvements to an existing auto repair garage minor use staff recommends denial.
Staff, may we have, have a report?
Mr. Vice Chairman, this site is currently operated as an auto repair garage minor, the site has outside storage adjacent to the east property line in the rear of the existing building, two barriers were constructed to restrict access to this area, the redesign changes the basic relationship of the site and parking configuration which is why there's a site plan review required. Two variances and two exceptions reinforce the unsuitability of the current plan, the applicant's created a self-imposed hardship by overbuilding the site, encroaching into required setbacks and staff recommends denial of all applications.
Applicant, name, name a record for the, or name an address for the record.
Candace Valenzuela, we, and Ivan Valenzuela, we're the business owners of Payless Tire Shop, five-thirty North Las Vegas Boulevard.
Thank you.
We are willing to comply with whatever recommendations that you make, we do ask that you take into consideration that in order to be able to conduct business and keep up with demand of sales, we need inventory on-site which is the reason we require the, the containers to be there, this is the way we took over the existing business, we are reducing from six to four containers according to the new plans that we, that you guys have and, and that's basically it, this is our livelihood and we need to be able to have inventory on hand in order to keep up with the sales.
Sir, would you like to add something?
My name is Simon Valenzuela, five-three-zero North Las Vegas Boulevard, we own it from the business of Payless Tire Shop and I really need the storage for, for the tires, we just try to keep going with the business, we don't try to do nothing wrong to, I mean, to do nothing wrong with, to the city but I mean, whatever we need to do to, to get it done at least to have a few to keep the business going, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't know if I mentioned, we are reducing from six to four containers and if that number needs to be reduced by some more, that, well, like I said, we're willing to comply with whatever recommendations but we do ask you take into consideration leaving us some form of storage for our inventory.
That's all we asked.
This is a public hearing, are you with the applicant?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on this item, come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, thank you, my name is Leo Bash, I reside at five-one-three-seven North Tyago Way, eight-nine-one-four-nine, I'm here on behalf of AGS Property Group, we own three homes in the, in the area, probably within four hundred feet of this business. We do need a lot of, you know, businesses and redevelopment in this area, however, I just want to bring up a couple of concerns, I did leave a, a letter with the planning, city planners office on May seventh, that's probably in your packet, I have a copy of it here. My concern is really with the, with the patrons of, of a secondary business on the site, there is a, a mobile restaurant that's there, it's been there for many years, at this time it appears to be a twenty-four-seven operation and many times there are lots of customers that have to stand in the area of the parking lot of this business, it's a high-traffic area, I've been to that mobile restaurant on many occasions and have witnessed that cars are going through this parking lot backing up or negotiating their way through it and the patrons have to move in order for these vehicles to get through, so my safe, my, my, my concern is relative to the safety of those customers and I would, I would ask that this commission consider that Payless Tire is not the only business operated here and probably not the primary business as far as the number of customers on a daily basis but it's the restaurant and I look out for the safety of those, of those patrons. I'm a clinical pharmacist at Sunrise Hospital, we do have a trauma unit and many ICUs, we have probably two hundred ICU beds at that hospital and many times my patients are patients that have, are pedestrian versus automobile or, or moped versus automobile and it's a very life-changing event, many times those people are in the hospital for extended periods of time, sometimes they don't even survive that, so I would just ask that the, that at this time that the applications be denied as, as staff has proposed and that if the applicant wants to come back without all of the standing customers in the parking lot at a later time that, that the site review plan be looked at differently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard, seeing none, I'll close the public discussion, turn, turn, turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion. Commissioner Goines.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, thank you, I think I talked to your representative this today but I actually went by your place about, probably about seven-thirty-five this morning and, and I drive a Ford F-one-fifty truck and I had the darnedest time turning that thing around in there especially when you get around that taco cart and what was even more surprising when you go around to the east side to see how you guys have it all gated in there, quite simply, this is just too busy on this corner and it's too much stuff like the gentleman said going on in that parking lot, you got tire shop going, you got a taco shop going and, and you know what, Metro kind of uses that, that corner a lot too, when they pull people over, they have a lot of folks up in there, I've seen motorcycle cops pulled over in there. I think you're at a point now where you've outgrown this corner, I'm certainly not going to support adding additional storage containers to stack on top of each other on, and I believe you wanted those on the south end closest to the freeway.
Yes.
There's just no way, the, the circulation is, is too tight on this site, even with removing that fence on the back east side of it and putting, I believe on your plan, you want to put seven or eight parking spaces along, along there, you just don't have the depth there to park cars and maneuver them around the little space that you have and so I will not be supporting that this afternoon, I, I spoke to your representative, we spoke in length, I told him, I, I, they mentioned the fact that you may do away with the taco cart, you have no problem doing that but that would still leave the same problem there. I think you're just over, I just think you're, you've over, you're, it's just too much, it's just too much, I, I can't support it. Mr. Chairman, if not, I'll make a motion on item thirty-seven of V A R five-eight-four-one-zero to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote.
Item thirty-eight V A R five-
Please post. Motion carries.
Sorry, item thirty-eight V A R five-eight-four-one-one move to follow staff's recommendation
Please post.
Item thirty-nine S D R five-eight-four-one-two move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine will be heard by the city council on June seventeenth twenty fifteen.
Thank you very much.
Did you understand that on, it's going to come back to city council?
Yes.
Yep, and you can come back at that time and talk with the council.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
Moving on to relating items forty through forty-four, forty, item number forty V A R five-eight-four-seven-one applicant owner Ryland Homes Nevada LLC, I'm going to make a correction to that, it should have read Richmond American Homes for possible action on a request for variance to allow a sixteen-foot front yard setback where twenty-five feet is required at six-nine-one-seven Winter Rain Road Ward six, staff recommends denial. Forty-one V A R five-eight-four-seven-three for possible action on a request for variance allow a fifteen-foot front yard setback where twenty-five feet is required at six-nine-two-seven Winter Rain Street, staff recommends denial. Item number forty-two V A R five-eight-four-seven-four for possible action on a request for variance to allow a fifteen-foot front yard setback where twenty-five feet is required at six-nine-three-zero Summers, Summerska Street, Ward six, staff recommends denial. Item number forty-three V A R five-eight-four-seven-five for possible action on a request for variance allows a sixteen-foot front yard setback where twenty-five feet is required at six-eight-two-zero Velvet Snow Street, Ward six, staff recommends denial and forty-four V A R five-eight-four-seven-six for possible action on a request for variance to allow twenty-one-foot front yard setback where twenty-five feet is required at nine-seven-oh-five Summer Bluff Seven, Ward six, staff recommends denial.
Staff, report please.
Mr. Vice Chairman, this is a request for five variance to allow five lots that have front yard setbacks which range from fifteen feet to twenty-one feet where twenty-five feet is required within a single-family residential development, the applicant wishes to provide home buyers the option to purchase a larger home than lots were, were designed to accommodate. One of the four models offered for sale within this development fails to meet the minimum front yard setback twenty-five feet on the five platted lots, staff finds this to be a self-imposed hardship and does recommend denial of all five variance requests.
Applicant.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, good, good evening, my name's Bob Gronhour, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road, in this matter I'm representing Richmond American Homes. If I could get your attention to the overhead here quickly, please, as you can see here highlighted in yellow, I have a thirty-five acre piece of property that's already approved for RD zoning for ninety-one lots, before I get into the five variances I'm requesting, I think it's important for me to explain to you the history of this project so you can appreciate why we're asking for these variances today. First of all, this property that you see here was, was zoned in the, in Clark County itself a few years ago, I work very closely with the neighbors to the north, neighbors over here to the east, also in this general vicinity, one of the things we did with Richmond American Homes, we came in with the RD zoning, we reduced the number of lots that were approved in this area, and matter of fact, what we also agreed to do with the neighbors is to do single fa, uh, single-story homes on all the lots that are located here. Under Clark County code, it requires a front yard setback of thirty feet, and, and they count the front yard setback goes from the middle of the street because we, we essentially have our roads that count as the property line from the center section of the line of the street for private streets all the way to the end of the lot, however, what happened is when we came in to work with the city for sewer services, the city required us, Richmond American Homes, to annex its property into the city before, for sewer services before they would allow us to do an annexation agreement which would essentially be a city-approved project. As we annexed into the city of Las Vegas, all we're doing is the same exact product that we've promised neighbors and we worked out the deals with the neighbors over the last couple of years, so when we get with respect to the five variances that we're requesting, here is the site plan here, one of our models, as I'm showing you here, does not meet the city code, front yard setback of twenty-five feet, as a matter of fact, this one here, as I'm showing you, goes to twenty-one feet in this area and it's only a small area where we have some pop-outs of, of an extra bedroom in this area, but if you take a closer look in here, we had the house exceeds a twenty-five-foot separation, as a matter of fact, this is three-car garage, to the depth of the house in some areas go up to twenty-five to forty-something feet for a front yard setback, plus, as I said earlier, in Clark County, we're allowed to count the setback is included into the center line of the street, in the city of Las Vegas, they count, the, the code, if I'm not mistaken, counts it from back of curb to measure for a front yard setback. The other thing why this is not a, a, a imposed hardship is with respect to the count of the side, the front yard setbacks on these other lots here, as you can see, they're at the elbows in this general vicinity and there's a very small area of the house itself once again that we're asking for the front yard setback. Again, as, as in the spirit of negotiations with the neighbors in this area, we wanted to make sure we're going to do all single-story homes, this is one of the four lots that was planned to fit on these lots itself, if that plan does not sell and there's another plan that sells and obviously, we're being very proactive here in coming for the variance up front instead, and, and then a variance would not be required for a different type of model. That being said, I, I believe the five lots that we have here warrant your approval and I can answer any other questions that you may have.
This is a public hearing, anybody wanting to be heard, please come to the podium, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the planning commission for discussion. Commissioner Goines.
I just think you made a compelling argument for me to support the request for approval. So there's no, any other questions, are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
If there's no other comments, yes, go, go ahead, Commissioner Goines.
On item forty V A R five-eight-four-seven-one move for approval subject to all staff's
Motion carries.
Item forty-one V A R five-eight-four-seven-three move for approval, all, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made, please vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Item forty-two V A R five-eight-four-seven-four move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made, please vote. What's that?
On item forty-two, I'll move to approve V A R five-eight-four-seven-four, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion's been made, please vote. Motion carries.
Item forty-three V A R five-eight-four-seven-five move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast- Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Please post.
Commissioner Quinn?
It's not on my screen. Sorry. Thank you.
And lastly, item forty-four, VAR five-eight-
Motion carries.
Item forty-four, VAR five-eight-four-seven-six, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items forty through forty-four are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk within ten days for a hearing at the June seventeenth City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item forty-five, VAR five-eight-five-oh-five, applicant owner, D.R. Horton, Inc., for possible action on a request for variance to allow an eight-foot rear yard setback where ten feet is required at nine-two-zero-nine, Roblo Creek Court, Ward Four Anthony. Staff recommends denial. And relating item forty-six, VAR five-eight-five-oh-six, applicant owner, D.R. Horton, Inc., for possible action on a request for variance to allow an eight-foot rear yard setback where ten feet is required at nine-two-one-zero, Roblo Creek Court, Ward Four Anthony. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant wants to provide homebuyers the option to purchase a home that is larger than the lots were designed to accommodate. This undeveloped land in the subdivision could be redesigned to accommodate the proposed model without a variance. Substantial evidence has not been presented to warrant the requested variance. As such, staff finds the hardship to be self-imposed and recommends denial of both variances.
Applicant.
Good evening. Joe Thomason, seven-zero-eight-zero, Los Anigas Street, Suite two-hundred, here on behalf of the applicant. As you can see, the parcel is a twenty-nine lot subdivision located on the southwest corner of Fort Apache and Gilmore. Actually, just similar to Mr. Gronauer's application previously, this is a piece that was a county island and was annexed in for sewer services. What we have on two lots, Lot twenty-five and twenty-eight, as described, we do request your approval of a reduction in our rear yard setback to go down to eight feet. The actual numbers actually are not a two-foot reduction. We don't need that much, but for the purposes of the application, we were asked to round it up to the nearest whole foot, so we have. The approval will allow us to offer three of the four models that are available for sale on this site. We believe that the mitigating factors should be, that should be considered, are that the, although we are reducing the rears, and as shown in this exhibit, to approximately eight feet, we actually have large side yards. They are fourteen feet in both instances, which we think mitigate the reduction in the rear yard. And then also, the impact of the reduction, one of the houses faces up and rears to Gilmore. Across the street from our development is the fire station, I think it's Fire Station forty-five. The second lot actually faces our entry street, doesn't back up to another lot, actually backs up to a landscape corridor. With that said, we request your approval.
This is a public hearing, and anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the Plan Commission for comment and discussion.
Mr. Chairman, this one appears to be very similar to the one we just approved a little while ago, and if there's no further discussion on there, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For item number forty-five, VAR five-eight-five-zero-five, I move to follow, excuse me, I move to approve, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on item number forty-six, which is VAR five-eight-five-zero-six, I again move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item forty-five and forty-six are final action this evening unless appealed within ten days to the city clerk for hearing at the June seventeenth, twenty-fifteen City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Item forty-seven through fifty, item forty-seven, VAR five-eight-five-nine-nine, applicant owner, Investor Equity Homes LLC, fifty percent, and Mosaic Land Two LLC, fifty percent, for possible action on a request for variance to allow no off-site improvements on Tioga Way and no curb gutter and streetlights on Rochelle Street where such are required on the southeast corner of Rochelle and Tioga Way, Ward Six, Ross. Staff recommends denial. Item forty-eight, VAR five-eight-six-zero-zero, for possible action on a request for variance to allow eight-foot tall retaining wall with four feet is the maximum allowed. Staff recommends denial. Item forty-nine, VAR five-eight-six-eight-two, for possible action on a request for variance to allow no sidewalks, streetlights, or gate on a private street where such are required. Staff recommends denial. Item fifty, VAR five-eight-six-one-three, for possible action on a request for waiver to allow a hundred-and-seventy-five-foot intersection offset where two-hundred-and-twenty feet is required, Ward Six. Staff recommends denial. And the last item, item fifty-one, TMP five-eight-five-two-eight, for possible action on a request for a tentative map for four lots, single-family residential subdivision, Ward Six, Ross. Staff recommends denial.
Applicant or staff, report please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site consists of one two-point-three-six acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Rochelle Street and Tioga Way. As the proposed tenant map for a four-lot, single-family residential subdivision requires three variances and two waivers, the requested variance and waivers are not, are, should not provide streetlights or sidewalks inside and outside of the development, to allow no gate on a private residential street that does not meet complete street standards, to allow a narrower street intersection offset than code requires, as well as to allow for perimeter retaining walls to exceed maximum height requirements. The density of the proposed development is consistent with the general plan, land use, designation of the rural neighborhood preservation, and lot sizes are consistent with the development with the residence estate zoning district. And staff is in support of the requested additional wall height and intersection offset. However, the remaining waivers and variances are inappropriate. Therefore, staff recommends denial of all requests. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Applicant.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, again, Bob Gronauer, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road. I'm here representing the applicant in these matters. The first thing I'd like to do, again, is get your attention to the property itself. If we could focus in, zoom in a little bit on the area. What I have here is a map of the general vicinity here to get you to appreciate, again, why we're asking for the variances and waivers that are before you. The general vicinity is, this is Grand Teton, this is Buffalo, which runs north and south. You have Arbor View High School located over here. You may be familiar with the farm, which is located here on Grand Teton in Tenaya, and you have parts of Gilcrees Orchard, which is located over here. This is a Silverstone Golf Course community that is located to the north and to the east here. If you're familiar with this piece of property here, it's essentially, a majority of this property is located in Clark County. It's in a rural neighborhood preservation area. What we're asking to do is, on this piece of property, which is, fronts out on Rochelle and is, to the west is Tioga Way, which is located there. What we're asking to do is do a four-lot subdivision development, which is really no different than what is exactly in here and it's developed within the rural neighborhood preservation area. Two things I want to point out before I get into the presentation. Number one, this application, because of the variances and waivers, is nowhere near as bad as it looks when I get into the actual application itself. And number two, if your, if your goal is to, to maintain the integrity of the rural neighborhood preservation area in this property area here, then you're going to, it's going to be an easy decision to approve these applications that are before you. So let me explain to you the reason why. Number one, one of these applications is a tenant map. As I already mentioned to you, it's for a four-lot subdivision. I have, excuse me, I have the four-lot subdivision here, which is a standard four-lot RNP subdivision that you see throughout the entire valley itself. These are minimum twenty thousand gross square foot lots. The next, next thing that I want to point out, actually, as I'm showing you this here, is we have a waiver of standards, which is, we have an intersection right here, ingress and egress, coming out onto Rochelle, but it's within two-hundred-and-twenty feet of Tioga Way. If you review your staff report, staff in their recommendations mentions that they can actually support this waiver. It has been approved on many other projects and many more, and in many areas where there's more traffic or heavily densely populated areas. But the reason why they recommend the denial on your agenda in the staff report is because they recommend the denial for two other variances that I'm going to get into discussions as we go on. But I wanted to try to knock off some of these applications that are before you. So I've already mentioned, we're coming in with a tenant map. This is also a waiver request to be within two-hundred-and-twenty feet of a intersection itself. The third application that, that is a bunch, that is a part of this bunch of applications is, we're asking to have an eight-foot-high wall on this property down along the southern property line here. Again, if you read the staff report, staff says that they can actually support it because we do have a legal hardship here, because you have topography issues on this property itself, that we fall within code where we can come in and ask for the increase of the wall heights itself. So once again, staff, in their staff report, mentions that they can recommend approval of the increase in wall height, but however, because of the other two variances that they're recommending denial, that they're recommending denial of all the applications itself. So that's three out of the five applications. The next two applications are the variances that are in question. And this is where, what we're asking, where I said, one of the goals is if you're looking to maintain the integrity of the rural neighborhood preservation area here, you're going to approve these applications. One of the things that we're asking to do is, within the cul-de-sac itself, and I'll show you the plan again here, what we want to do is keep this just for pavement only, which means we're not going to build streetlights, we're not going to put curb gutter and sidewalk within the private streets section located here. If you're familiar to the area, and I have a picture here of one of the cul-de-sacs, but I have many other pictures, this is what the typical cul-de-sacs look like within this island, this county island of rural neighborhood preservation area. As you can see here, there are no streetlights, there are no sidewalks, it's paving. That's how all the subdivisions that are built within this community are. What we'd like to do is ask you to approve the variance where we're asking to allow the paving itself like that, and also not to put a gated, gated community within this rural neighborhood preservation area. Three, two reasons. One is, this is a horse country in this area. This is where people are going to have horses, and it's probably easier not to have places gated in. And number two, if there is a concern that someone's going to be confused between what's a privately maintained right-of-way and a publicly maintained right-of-way, we could put signs in the, in the beginning of the cul-de-sac entrance, ingress and egress way, to just mention that it's going to be privately maintained road, although it's open for public access, obviously. And then the last variance that we're asking for, the staff's recommending denial, is the, is to remove, or as I call, waive, the off-site improvements along Rochelle and Tioga Way. And what that means is, we're asking along Tioga is to remove, and not to be required to build, streetlights, curb gutter, sidewalks, and an amenity zone. And matter of fact, if you go up and down along Tioga, this is what Tioga looks like today. Obviously, if we are required to build Tioga and put streetlights here, I don't think the neighbors that live out here are going to be too happy with respect to put some, some urban standards in this area. The other part of this is along Rochelle. Although we are required, and as part of the conditions, this is along Rochelle here, as you can see on our side of the street, you can see there's no curb gutter, sidewalk, et cetera. However, we're going to be required to build a equestrian path along the front edge of our property. We've agreed to do that, although today, it does not physically connect to anything to our east or to our west with respect to the equestrian trail. Now, if you're concerned, what's going to happen in the future for the development if we, the city, needs to come in to build the future off-site improvements? There is a condition, which all the county properties in this area have agreed to do that are existing in here in these rural neighborhood areas. In the county, they call it a deed restriction, that, which, what that is, is the deed restriction in the county on these county parcels are not required today to build the off-site improvements, but in the future, when the county calls upon themselves to build, to build out those roads, that's when they're going to come in and build that out. As a condition, on your variance, on the variance to, as to waive the off-site, there is a condition there that would require us to record a covenant against the land that we would have to go build those offsites in the future, which makes sense. So in all, if you really take a look at the totality of the applications itself, as I started out, there's five applications here. It does sound pretty ugly when you start getting through and looking at the applications itself, but then when you really get into it itself and you go, do you want to preserve the rural neighborhood preservation area? If the answer is yes, you can understand now, as I walk you through just the tentative map for the four lots, the three variances, and the waiver of requirements for the intersection, for the distance intersection, you'd understand that this, this application, if approved, actually is going to fit compatible and harmoniously within this area for development. So it comes down to a typical four-lot subdivision in an RNP that you see throughout the valley. I could answer any other questions that you may have.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please come down to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Ruiz, and I'm at eighty-one fifteen North Tioga Way, adjacent to these properties. And I've spoken to many of our, the homeowners in the area, and we'd like to see these improved, approved. There will be improvements with the one lot that we're discussing up there. There's an abandoned white house up there right now where kids are currently coming from the high school and vandalizing the property. So we would like to see that gone. We'd like to see nice homes in that area. We've been in our neighborhood and in our home since it's been brand new. We built it twenty-three years ago, and my elderly neighbors just left because they were missing Dancing with the Stars, so I apologize. But they all would like to see these also approved so it can better the neighborhood. But we'd like to stay as rural as possible and remain without sidewalks and without gutters and without, uh, streetlights, because we like it dark out there. We moved out there that long ago. Nothing was around us. We moved out there for a reason. We'd like to maintain the country and not the city, even though we love the city. But we would like to stay as rural as possible if we could. And we'd like to preserve and keep the neighborhoods looking as best as we can as they are. And we'd also like to ensure that no two-story homes will be built, because we're all single-story homes for the majority in those neighborhoods.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and turn it over to the Commissioners for discussion, starting with Commissioner Philengus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many times we're here, and we get a lot of these issues that arise in the rural areas where we're, you know, where the, the issue is to preserve the rural nature of the neighborhood. And, and I think that's what we have to do here, and quite frankly, I think if we were to force the curbs and the gutters and everything on Mr. Gronauer's client, I think you would have an uprising from the neighbors around there. So I think this is one of those perfect things where you just do what they want to do on this so that the characteristic of the neighborhood stays intact.
I concur wholeheartedly. It's almost like trying to take the country out of the boy, but you can't. And so we don't need to come out here and, and take the country and make it cityfied. So I'm going to leave it countryfied. You will see my support.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn?
Well, I also support any type of horse property that's being maintained, because we don't have enough of it, and I appreciate you working so well with the neighbors, Mr. Gronauer, and I appreciate you, Tracy, for staying so long and for letting us know that your neighbors do want this, because if we didn't hear from you, we wouldn't have known it. So I appreciate your time, most of all. Thank you.
And just a couple of comments from myself. I agree with, you know, every, every time we come across one of these, the neighbors in this RE designation always wants to keep it with no curb and gutter and things such as that, but I have a question for Lucian. as that, but I have a question for Lucian, because sometimes a curb and gutter will help us redirect our, our, the flow of water and flooding, and the more that we build and the more streets and the this and that, it creates an impact on the water. Will they be required to have a full drainage study on this and whenever they come in?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, they are required to do a drainage study for this project and the other project as well.
Okay. All right. No further questions. Can we get a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For item number forty-seven, which is VAR five-eight-five-nine-nine, I move to approve this, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number forty-eight, which is VAR five-eight-six-zero-zero, I move to approve it, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number forty-nine, which is VAR five-eight-six-eight-two, I again move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number fifty, which is WVR five-eight-six-one-three, I again move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number fifty-one, which is TMP five-eight-five-two-eight, I again move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items forty-seven through item fifty-one will be heard by the City Council on June seventeenth, twenty fifteen.
Moving on to item fifty-two, VAR five-eight-six-zero-four, applicant owner, investor equity Homes LLC, for possible action on a request for variance to allow no offsite improvements on Ackerman Avenue and Tioga Way, where such are required, and on the southeast corner of Ackerman Avenue and Tioga Way, Ward six, Ross, staff recommends denial. Item number fifty-three, VAR five-eight-six-zero-six, for possible action on a request for variance to allow an eight-foot tall retaining walls where four feet is maximum allowed, staff recommends denial. Fifty-four, VAR five-eight-six-eight-three, for possible action on a request for variance to allow no sidewalks, streetlights, or gate on a private street where such are required, staff recommends denial. Item number fifty-five, WVR five-eight-six-one-four, for possible action on a request for a waiver to allow a two-hundred-foot intersection offset where two-hundred-and-twenty feet is required, Ward six, staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject site consists of one parcel totaling two-point-eight-two acres of land located on the southeast corner of Ackerman Avenue and Tioga Way. The applicant is proposing to split the parcel into four residentialized lots by way of a parcel map. The applicant is further proposing not to provide streetlights or sidewalks inside or outside the development, to allow not, no gate on a private residential street that does not meet complete strand, standards, to allow a narrow street intersection offset than code requires, as well as to allow for perimeter retaining walls to exceed maximum height requirements. Although staff can support the additional wall height intersection offset, the remaining two applications are not supported. As such, staff recommends denial of all four applications associated with this request. Please note that additional letters of protest have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Sorry, applicant, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioners, Bob Grunauer, eighty-three forty-five West Sunset Road. I'm here once again representing the, the owner and applicant, this time, as you can see on the map here in this general vicinity, on this two and a half acres. I have two ways to go with this. I could give you another fifteen-minute presentation and bore you, or I could just tell you I'd like to incorporate my comments from the previous, um, presentation, and you understand what those issues are. The young lady is here to speak on the item itself, and I would just turn it over to her so she could make my presentation.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard in this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tracy Ruiz. I'm at eighty-one fifteen North Tioga Way. And for the same reasons, we'd like to maintain the rural integrity of our neighborhood and keep it a little bit country.
Thank you.
And it's adjacent to another cul-de-sac, so we'd like to mimic that. There's no sidewalks, no streetlights. We'd like to keep it, keep it that way.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public discussion, turn it over to Plan Commission for discussion and action.
Mr. Chairman, this is roughly similar to what we just approved, so there's no further discussion. I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, item number fifty-two, which is VAR five-eight-six-zero-four, I move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number fifty-eight, which is VAR five-eight-six-zero-six, I move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number fifty-four, which is VAR five-eight-six-eight-three, I again move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Commissioner Quinn. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number fifty-five, which is WVR five-eight-six-one-four, I again move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items fifty-two through fifty-five will also be heard at the City Council meeting on June seventeenth, twenty fifteen.
Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Moving on to item fifty-six, VAR five-eight-five-five-eight, applicant owner, Harrison Properties LTD, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a proposed roof sign to project horizontally seven feet from the roof where four feet is allowed at seven-oh-nine thirty-seven thirty-one, south of Las Vegas Boulevard's Ward three coffin. Staff recommends denial. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant wishes to make the sign visible to traffic on Las Vegas Boulevard. However, there is not an extraordinary circumstance related to the property itself that warrants additional projection in doing so. Redesigning the sign to reduce the length of projection by three feet would allow conformance to Title nineteen requirements. In view of the absence of any hardship imposed by the site's physical characteristics, it's concluded the applicant's hardship is preferential in nature. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant, please.
Hello, Laura Drea, five-twenty South Fourth Street, here on behalf of Harrison Properties. This is a matter where Title nineteen, Title nineteen's roof sign code doesn't quite sync with the street side development and character that exists on the scenic byway, especially on this block. The sign does meet height restrictions, and it does not cantilever over Las Vegas Boulevard. What is inviting the variance is that everything to the right or to the, to the right or to the west of O M E extends more than four feet from the front of the building. The short of this is that when it appeared before the DDRC, the four members in attendance agreed that this particular sign does meet the intent of the scenic byway code. That's it.
Thank you. This is public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to the Plan Commission for discussion.
Um, in, I wasn't at the DDRC when this was heard, but in looking at the, the packet and the sign and the type of buildings that were created, again, we're, we're looking at the pod-type buildings that Container Park is, and, uh, part of coming up with those buildings is also coming up with some unique signage that fits along there. And when you look at the tourist draw that this is, and the fact that it isn't a setback issue, it's more of a, a projection issue from the, the building, I think it, actually, I like the way it looks, and I think it works. So if there are no other objections, I'd make a motion for, to follow staff's as if approved.
If I could just have one comment.
Go ahead.
And I'll let you make your motion. Uh, and at DDRC, I, I thought you were there. I forgot that you weren't, but, you know, as far as this sign goes, it's lined up with a structural post. That's one of the reasons why it's there. And plus, it's the marquee sign, and everything hangs out further than, than the sign in question. So maybe I just don't understand, but it looks good to me, and I don't understand why this is even an issue, so I'll go ahead and let you make a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to follow staff's as if approved conditions for the approval of WVR five-eight-six-one-four.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Please cast your, please cast your vote.
I think you misstated the, uh...
Did I read the wrong one?
Fifty-six.
Okay, I'm sorry. VAR five-eight-five-five-eight?
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item fifty-six is final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days for a hearing at the June seventeenth, twenty fifteen City Council meeting.
Uh, moving on, item fifty-seven, SUP five-eight-five-three-nine, applicant owner, Senior Nevada Benefit Group LP, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed motor vehicle sales you, used use with a waiver to allow eighteen thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-five square feet of area dedicated to the use where twenty-five thousand square feet and some minimum required at two-thousand-six-hundred Fremont Street, Ward three coffin. Staff recommends approval. Fifty-eight, SDR five-eight-five-four-zero, for possible action on a request for site development plan review for a proposed motor vehicle sales used use with a waivers to allow a seven-foot wide landscape buffer along the east property line and a five-foot wide landscape buffer along a portion of the west property line where fifteen feet is required adjacent to the right of way at two, uh, two-six-zero-zero Fremont Street, Ward three coffin. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, before staff makes its report, I have represented the applicant's representative, my law firm has, and therefore, out of abundance of caution, I'll be abstaining on these matters.
Thank you. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to establish a used motor vehicle sales business on an irregular-shaped triangular parcel of land within a general commercial zoning district, adjacent to a hundred-and-five-foot primary arterial. The proposed use is appropriate at this location, as it can be adequately common, adequately accommodate the use and is adjacent to other commercial uses. The associated site design best accommodates the use while maintaining substantial conformance to code requirements in light of the design challenges presented by the lot's dimensional restrictions. Staff, therefore, is recommending approval of both applications and their associated waivers requests. Thank you.
Can we hear from the applicant?
Vice Chairman, Commissioners George Garcia, ten-fifty-five Whitney Ranch Drive, Suite two-ten. Pleasure to be before you. We've worked with staff on this challenging piece of property and worked with NDOT and both planning and traffic engineering, and we concur with the recommendations and analysis by staff. Happy to answer any questions on either of the items.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public discussion, turn it over to the Plan Commission for further This one's on Boulder Highway. You know, I'm not too thrilled about most car dealerships coming up and down Fremont and Main Street and, and our redevelopment area, because I don't feel that it really facilitates redevelopment. And however, um, this one is out on Boulder Avenue where there's quite a few other, um, quite a few other dealerships, and, um, so I have less of an issue with this. I think staff got it right, and, uh, those are my comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments or questions, I'd move for approval, subject to all staff's as of approved conditions.
Motion's been made. Please post. Motion carries.
And with regard to item fifty-eight, um, move for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Note the abstention of Gus Phlongas on fifty-seven and fifty-eight.
Items fifty and seven, fifty-seven and fifty-eight are final action this evening unless appealed to the City Clerk's office within ten days for a hearing before the City Council in, on June seventeenth.
Vice Chairman and Commissioners, thank you and good night.
Good night.
Moving on to item fifty-nine, SUP five-eight-five-six-one, applicant Tower Distribution Center LLC, owner Southwest College of Medical Dental Assistance and Practical Nurses, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a public school primary use at four-six-two-four through four-six-six-zero North Rancho Drive, Ward three Anthony. Staff recommends approval. Item number sixty, SDR five-eight-five-six-two, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to improve site development plan review, SDR one-six-five-zero-three. For nine proposed detached modular buildings totaling fourteen thousand eight-hundred-and-sixteen square feet, Ward, Ward four Anthony, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, currently, the subject site consists of three vacant single-story buildings and seven undeveloped pad sites. Originally, in two thousand and six, the City Council approved the site development plan review for a ten-building office complex totaling seventy-four thousand nine-hundred-and-two square feet. The three existing buildings totaling twenty-five thousand five-hundred-and-six square feet were constructed but later abandoned, leading the subject site in current state. The applicant is proposing to locate a public school primary use within the three existing vacant buildings. In addition to occupying the three vacant buildings, the applicant is proposing to a major amendment to the previously approved site development plan review by eliminating the undeveloped seven office buildings totaling forty-nine thousand three-hundred-and-ninety-six square feet, and to construct nine temporary detached modular buildings totaling fourteen thousand eight-hundred-and-sixteen square feet. The combination of existing buildings and proposed modular buildings will total to forty thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-two square feet and house thirty-six classrooms. The proposal to locate a public school primary use within the three existing buildings and nine proposed modular buildings eliminates the previously approved office complex at the subject site. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the previously approved landscape plan. A future development of the seven undeveloped pad sites shall require future site development plan reviews. The proposed school is appropriately located in the module buildings or in compliance with the Title nineteen development standards. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both requests with conditions. Please note that additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publication. Thank you.
Can we hear from the applicant?
Joe Morgan with Sustain Builders, representing the applicant, two-two-four-five West Cheyenne, Suite one-twelve.
Thank you.
If approved, I would like to modify conditions fifteen and condition sixteen, um, in conjunction with condition thirteen, prior to operating as a school. If we can change the verbiage on fifteen and sixteen to prior to operating as a school, it would give the general contractor a sufficient amount of time to complete the project, as a school needs to occupy to move from their existing location into this location by August first. So, um, based on the conditions that are currently on the site, it's been vandalized quite, pretty significantly, and, uh, switchgear's been vandalized. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, and, uh, it, we won't be able to accomplish that if it's prior to pulling permits, if these other two conditions are prior to pulling permits. If we can change that to prior to occupying as a school, then, uh, I believe we can complete the project on time. And then I can answer any questions.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Deb Roberson. I'm the superintendent at Quest Preparatory Academy. My address is seven-six-nine-five Rio Vista Street in Las Vegas. Commissioner Goines, just for the record, I don't know if you remember me, but a year ago, we came to you when we were kicked out of the YMCA and went to ASU, and you asked me at that time to give you a status report after our first year, and that's that little piece of paper that, thank you, sir, that we so proudly passed around. I wanted you to see our successes. We're back again this year, because in February this past year, we were told that our lease would not be renewed for the facility that we currently occupy. The Montecito campus that we are currently in holds approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty students that have all said they fifty students that have all said they want to return with us, they want to follow us wherever we are. We have about fifty-three staff members. We have five years of stability with this community and the students and the parents we serve. We're proud to tell you that we're a four-star school, and we hope that the board will see its way to approve for us to relocate at this property.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Terry Barber, and my address is fifty-one forty-five Blissville Valley Circle, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-four-nine. I am here as a parent for Quest. We have three daughters with needs that were not being met. Quest has been a really good fit for our children with the special needs. As a parent, I encourage you to please pass this so that not only my kids, but all of the families of Quest will have a permanent home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Zidler, seven-seven-four-five Tortoiseshell Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-four-nine. I'm a parent, and I have two daughters. I go to Quest and have excelled and have a great education there. They love it there. My youngest, eight-year-old, wanted to come tonight, but just a hair bit late. She would love, she would tell you a lot of stories and great things that go on at Quest, so I, my daughters and I would ask commission to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Upton, five-one-seven Indian Bluff Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-four-five. It's a common, it's a biblical proverb as well as a common cultural truism that without vision, the people perish, and education brings great vision to people's lives through inspiration, through many other ways as well. Quest is a quality school, a quality organization, in which it provides, it strives to provide an excellent learning atmosphere as well as an excellent education for its students. Just as we saw from the Kipo Academy earlier tonight, we can see the great influence that education can have on communities and on areas of our city, and I believe Quest can absolutely do that for our northwest side of town as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else, I'll go ahead and close the public discussion, turn it over to the planning commission for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've looked at this project. I'm okay with it. It's a good fit all the way around. The only concern is that these modular buildings don't become, we're not looking at them four or five years from now, and I do like the fact that we do have a condition on here that says twenty-four months from the date of final approval. You know, if you're not ready to build, we can instruct you to tear them down. So, at this time, I'm going to support this, and if there's no further discussion, I will move, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, I do have a question because the applicant stated that he was trying to revise some kind of conditions, and I'd like to.
Yeah, I was going to ask that prior to my motion here because I wasn't following the condition request because he mentioned conditions fifteen and sixteen, and it really didn't match up with what he was saying, so maybe planning could help us with what he's trying to accomplish here.
I think that might be Lucian and.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was just looking at the conditions. I think with the traffic study, we can wait for the private operators of school, but I think that when he, when he gets to the, on condition sixteen, when they go to pull building permits, they're going to need some type of civil plan, and if, they need that civil plan, that's going to require the drainage study update with the civil site. I don't think I can support the request for sixteen, but I believe I could support the request for fifteen, and if we changed fifteen, we just changed the first sentence, which would be, "Traffic impact analysis must be submitted to and approved by the Department of Public Works prior to operating as a school," period, and replace that whole sentence with just that. But that would be a possibility if the commission's so inclined.
Is that agreeable to the applicant?
If, if I can request, our original intent was the buildings were not completed as they sit now. They're, the contractor that fell out in 'oh eight, they never completed the shells. So, there are existing civils that have been approved by the building department, and it was originally intention to build according to that plan and complete the areas of Phase One with the paved areas and the buildings that are already completed. If we can build now and complete the shells as they were originally intended and revise the drawings during the tenant improvement phase to include the site drainage plan, which would accommodate, you know, the fields and the, and the change in the site plan, and that would allow us to get the shells completed because right now, as it stands, we, we have to renew the permit on the shells to go any further, and because of the timeline we have, I just don't have enough time to be able to complete the work that it takes to get C F C on the shell and then also move in at the tenant improvement. So, that's why I was requesting if we can change that to prior to occupying as a school, that would allow me to get the shells completed as they stand based on the drawings that were permitted originally, and then while I'm, because I'm currently working on the civil drawings and the tenant improvements, once those are submitted and we occupy, then those changes will be made and the drainage study will be done, and.
Well, Lucian, he could, he could pull a building permit and concurrently work on updating his improvement plans. Is that correct?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. What I was thinking was that we may just add to condition sixteen that it doesn't include tenant improvements because if we's doing other improvements that are drainage-related, we'll definitely need the drainage study for that, so I could just add to the end of sixteen, this condition does not apply to tenant improvement permits, and that, yeah, they can work on tenant improvements because those foundations, finished floor foundations are already, you know, fixed, and it's other site-related grading that we'd need the drainage study update for. So, again, if the commission's inclined, we can add a sentence to sixteen that says this condition does not apply to tenant improvement building permits.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
For item number fifty-nine, which is S U P five eight five six one, I move to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all the conditions.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, item number six-zero, which is S D R five eight five six two, I again move to follow staff's recommendations for approval with the following changes to the conditions. On condition number fifteen, it should re, we're going to replace the first sentence, and it'll say, "A traffic impact analysis must be submitted to and approved by the Department of Public Works prior to operating as a school." And then on condition number sixteen, we're going to add a sentence at the end of condition sixteen, which says, "This condition does not apply to tenant improvements, tenant improvement building permits."
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items fifty-nine and sixty are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within ten days for hearing before the city council on June seventeenth.
Thank you. Moving on to director's business, item sixty-one, T X T five eight four-nine-seven, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for discussion and possible action on a request amendment Las Vegas Municipal Code, chapters nineteen point one-two relating to permitted uses and nineteen point one-eight relating to definitions and measures to update the descriptions, minimum special use permit requirements and definitions of packaged liquor off-sale and retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale uses to modify the distance separation and capacity of establishments and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval. Staff, report, please.
Mr. Vice Chair, this is, at your last meeting, Deputy Director Duddleson gave a presentation regarding packaged liquor, and this is the ordinance that resulted from work that we were doing in regards to that. This amendment adds a distance separation for packaged liquor and package, accessory packaged liquor off-sale. It adds one-thousand-foot distance separation from other packaged liquor off-sale establishments, taverns, and sexually-earned businesses. It also limits the retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale to locate within grocery stores and drugstores only, as defined by Title Six. It also establishes a definition in Title nineteen for drugstore. Currently, this would move us towards a reduction of packaged liquor off-sale, which, as the report last meeting explained, had impacts, negative impacts, to the City of Las Vegas, and this would look to limit those opportunities to provide packaged liquor off-sale in certain establishments. I'm here to answer any questions, or the Deputy Director, Ms. Duddleson, can answer them also, as she's much more versed in alcohol than I am. In regards to land use and licensing.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, I abstained on this item because, or at least the idea of this item, because I, I was concerned there was some conflict with some tenants that I had. I've since verified that there are no conflicts that I'm aware of, so I have some questions. I, it's not that I disagree with the idea that we probably let the pendulum swing a little too far in approving off-sale liquor establishments, but I contend making a drugstore a special class of business that suddenly is, twelve-thousand-square-foot drugstores, they're, you know, the major ones are a little bit bigger, and grocery stores. We had presentations tonight about talking about how this walkable, small business kind of energized West Charleston that could be, but we're, this, this flies against small business. This, this says if you're Walgreens or C V S, we trust you to do everything right, and if you're the mom-and-pop liquor store that's watching their neighborhood and watching what's happening on the street, takes an active involvement, more so than just a corporate check once in a while, is, is not as good a citizen when it comes to liquor, and that, and that I have a concern with because I think we, I believe in small business a lot, and I think, but there's, there's also a group of businesses here that are major operators that don't seem to be defined in this, like a Total Wine and Spirits, which is a one-of-a-kind liquor establishment with, that's forty, fifty thousand feet, has phenomenal sales, but has liquor and wines and specialty drinks you can't get anywhere else in town, and the quality, I mean, I stopped in today just to look at what they were doing. They got bottles of wine and liquor at forty, fifty thousand dollars a bottle, so the, these, again, these aren't, these are major institutional-type or at least credit-type uses. So, I think in our desire to correct the ancillary packaged liquor, that, that can be a problem, putting it in the hands of major drugstores and groceries stores only is a concern to me, because that's what this will do. This will say the, the small mom-and-pop liquor store is, unless I'm missing that there's something else that's here, but give you, for instance, I, I went by a major drugstore chain that has a liquor license several blocks from a property I manage. They've been open a week, and on their front step, they got three guys panhandling, one drinking beer he just bought inside, and I went and asked the manager, you know, are you going to do something to stop this problem? And he goes, "Well, we don't go outside. We, we don't deal with any problems outside our door because we're not supposed to." Well, I, I know the, the smaller liquor establishments do go out and, and deal with problems, so if we're going to say packaged liquor should be in these larger corporate venues, we've got to understand that they're going to be, take an active role in policing their own business, because when every major corporate tenant I deal with, if you ask them to get involved in what happens outside their business, even if they're selling the product, they go, "Well, we don't like our people to go out there." If a kid goes to a grocery store and steals a twelve-pack of beer and runs out the front door, we don't chase them. We don't go after them. We don't care where they go with the beer, but we just won't do that. And that's what, that's the, that's the corporate policies with these, these two class of businesses, and I would, I would say if we're going to make some changes about distance separation is one thing, but to, to provide a, a greater opportunity to do these locations based on corporate size, we're making a big mistake, and I think it could be fine-tuned a little bit. That's, but I do agree, we, we need to address this somehow or some way.
Mr. Chairman, if I might address that, the, the intent of this is, is not to address what you're, what you're talking about. Accessory packaged liquor is, is a, is a, a business model where your primary business is a drugstore or your primary business is a grocery store, and you would be allowed up to ten percent of your space. That's accessory packaged liquor. In state law, as well as Title Six, there's also a standalone liquor store. So, those standalone liquor stores, there's no size requirements at all. So, if you want to be Lee's Liquor or you want to be something smaller, a little hole in the wall, you want to specialize in tequilas or, or whatever, you can still do that in whatever space, large or small, that you want to, but you have to operate under the state law and under the licensing as a liquor store, which means minors cannot go in there unless they are accompanied by an adult. So, in accessory packaged liquor, where you're in a, in a drugstore or a grocery store, minors can go in there without an adult. So, it's the difference between a liquor store that is for adults only, they can be any size. There's no size restriction. It is for accessory packaged liquor where you are, your primary business is something besides liquor.
But so, the thousand square feet, or the thousand distance separation, would that be a liquor store would have to be a thousand feet from another liquor store, or is it a thousand feet from an ancillary package liquor?
It is from either, the, the thousand feet. Currently, in Clark County, it's fifteen-hundred feet separation. In North Las Vegas, it's fifteen-hundred feet separation. In Henderson, it's one-thousand feet. We're the only ones that does not have a separation.
So, if I have a major grocery store and a major drugstore in the same shopping center, they have to be a thousand square feet to have ancillary liquor, or are they exempted? Because most shopping centers built within the city limits have those two components in them, and they're about four-hundred feet apart at best on, on one, on one parcel utilized. At major intersections, we have an abundance of, you'll have one, a grocery chain on one corner, a drug chain on the other corner, a drug chain on the other corner, and they're all within that thousand feet.
We'll take a look at that map-wise. Most of the mapping that we've done so far shows that either we have in the code that major street distance exception, where you can go across those, those major streets, or they, they are that, that far apart from each other, but we, we will take a look at that.
And, and another example of what we approved last year, I guess, or two years, three years ago, maybe, where we had Total Wine and Spirits in Boca Park, just an example, and then, you know, we already have an existing grocery store. We have a Target store all on the same development, and then we approved Lee's Liquor out there. And I don't think there's any other ancillary. There may be one more ancillary in there. Though, under this ordinance, those would be prohibited?
The existing ones could remain, but, but a new one would not be able to come in. That, that is correct.
Okay.
What some communities have done, either on their land use side or on their licensing side, is when additional place wants to come in, they have to do what they call a saturation study, where they actually look and, and make a case to the, to the planning commissioner of the city council that, that the community or the area that they want to add addition to add additional packaged liquor to is actually underserved for the community.
So the, there's several remaining major drugstores that have not come in to ask for their liquor spot. If this is passed, then they would be unable to ask for a waiver? Is this waivable or not waivable?
I do not believe that, that in, uh, the land use side, that it is waivable.
Okay.
So, no, they would be, they would be precluded at this point in time, depending on their location.
What do you, um, what do you mean, depending on their location?
Depending on if they're within a thousand feet of another, i- if you don't have a, your packaged liquor land use-
Right, right, but if they're within a thousand feet, then it would be, it would be-
If they're, if they're within a thousand feet, they would not be able to be approved, correct?
Okay, all right.
And from what I'm reading here, it, um, it says, "Except as otherwise provided, no grocery store or drugstore establishment with accessory, accessory package liquor off-sale, uh, shall be located within four hundred feet of any church, house of worship, school, individual, uh, childcare, um, or city park." In addition, the retail establishment with accessory package liquor off-sale would have that distance separation, so it doesn't appear that there's a distance separation. I could be wrong, but from the way I'm reading this, it doesn't look like there's a distance separation from a drugstore to a drugstore. I do see-
In the, in the backup, it said like for like.
Um, in the, in the backup of language, it said like for like.
It does.
Distance. And when you, when you factor in the, um, taverns, and, and I don't really care about sexually oriented businesses, if people wanna buy alcohol and drink by them, that's, you know, the world as it is. But, so when you, when you plug in the tavern licenses, I think, I think, you need to map this before we, we, it, it becomes a, a final scenario, 'cause I think, I think it may be, um, it may create as many problems as we think it solves. Um, and I, but I, I agree, we need to do something with regard to that. But, uh, just the way we have grocery stores, 'cause if a grocery store can't go on a corner, it's not waivable, a grocery store won't come to an area if suddenly there's a distance separation, like, um, a major grocery store would not come downtown if you said you can't be within a thousand feet of what's existing. So we, we may, we may create, we may solve ten problems and create ten others. That, and that's what my concern was on, is looking at the distances.
I, and, and Mr. Vice Chairman, I just, uh, we're looking at the entire code itself. There are, uh, provisions for waivers for larger establishments. If you're fifty thousand square feet, you can get a waiver of the, uh, distance requirement, uh, for both, uh, protected uses and the similar uses, uh, is in the code itself. Uh, so if you're fifty thousand square feet or larger, you're a large grocery store, you can't seek that waiver. Also, uh, is, uh, Mr. Lowenstein, was there a, uh, an item there regarding, uh, right-of-ways also?
Uh, not regarding the packaged liquor. Under the accessory package liquor, the minimum distance requirements set forth in, in the chapter can, are otherwise non-waivable under vision, may be waived in accordance with establishments in the downtown casino overlay district, um, in accordance with applicable provisions of Town Center Development Standards Manual, in connection with proposed establishments having between twenty thousand to fifty thousand square feet of retail floor space, in connection with retail establishments having less than twenty thousand square feet of retail floor space, if the area to be used for sale displayed merchandise, alcohol beverages, uh, and each used to be protected, separated by a highway or a right-of-way with a width of at least a hundred feet.
Which is where most of those major grocery stores are located, on the corners.
Ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion, uh, regarding, uh, text amendment five eight four nines. Did someone else wanna speak on this?
I, I don't believe we opened the public hearing-
Oh.
-as part of this.
I'm sorry, sir.
This is a public hearing. I apologize about that. So, um, please state your name and, uh, address for the record.
Thank you. Jonathan Nguyen, four hundred South Rampart, Suite four hundred. Uh, I represent Walgreens, uh, regarding liquor licensing and land use matters in Nevada, and obviously here in, in the city. Uh, this proposal raises some concerns. Um, you know, previously, there was discussion about, uh, limiting liquor in the downtown area. Uh, this proposal, it's clarified a little bit for me, too, uh, tonight, is that it reflects the entire city, um, and it, you know, with the one thousand-foot separation, uh, as Commissioner Truesdale was discussing earlier, would, uh, preclude maybe some businesses from coming in. Um, uh, one other thing to consider, too, is that, you know, there's a comparison between the county and how they measure things, and how the city measures things, where the city measures distance by, from parcel to parcel, whereas the county is, huh, as the crow flies from door to door. So it makes a big difference when you're measuring a thousand foot that way compared to when you'd measure a thousand foot in the county. Um, obviously, you know, we'd look forward to working with planning department, business license on this issue moving forward. Uh, we just wanted to, you know, make our presence known in, in this matter, and, uh, also ask that you, you know, we recommend that this be denied, and, uh, we can just work forward through the, uh, the process to make it clearer and to tailor something specific to the proposal that was more towards the problems going on in downtown as opposed to the entire city. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Um, I'll close the public, uh, public comment, um, and if there's no other, uh, discussion, then we're ready for a motion.
Um, I'm gonna follow staff's recommendation for approval on text amendment five eight four nine seven.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Uh, motion fails. Can we have, uh, another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, um, on item sixty-one, uh, for denial.
Motion, uh, to deny carries. Item number, oh.
Uh, no, you got this?
Right.
Okay. Oh, this item will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Item number sixty-two, T X T five eight eight nine seven, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for discussion, possible action on a request, and then, Las Vegas Municipal Code nineteen point one-six, point one-six-zero, to allow for the sale of used automobiles, trucks, and boats as a temporary commercial permit and to provide for other related matters. Staff recommends approval.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, current, currently, only one site within the city's jurisdiction meets the minimum zoning requirements for car sales as a temporary, uh, event. Uh, you must have ninety acres size and be part of a regional mall. Uh, it, the, the number of times such sales can occur are, are four times per year and a maximum of three days per occurrence. Uh, this ordinance would reduce the size from, uh, ninety acres to twenty aggregate acres to allow shopping centers, which are, which are not mobbed, mapped as commercial subdivisions, to be eligible to sell both new and used cars as a special event, uh, under a temporary commercial permit. Uh, staff did a stellar job of researching all of those sites. Currently, there are twenty-one sites in the city's jurisdiction that would meet the, the, the minimum requirements to hold such events. They would still be limited to four times a year at a maximum of three days per occurrence, uh, and we're here to answer any questions.
This is a public hearing. Anyone, uh, wishing to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the planning commission Uh, if there's no discussion, can we, uh, have a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval on text amendment five eight eight nine seven. Thank you.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
And this item will be forwarded to City Council in ordinance form.
Item sixty-three, citizens' participation and public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters, matters within jurisdiction and the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless a subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of time, uh, discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Um, seeing none. Does any of the commissioners have any final comments? Seeing none, uh, maiden adjourn.